The Board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide a useful forum for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required on the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 1046, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet in the times on January 9, 2020, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to go into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that these proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Representatives of the sending district, the representative, excuse me, of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 388.1. In the event that this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central admin, and district-wide staff only votes; otherwise, are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Beth Behrend.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Dan Dart.
Here.
Jess Deutsch.
Here.
Betsy Bagwell.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Michelle, you're muted.
I see her.
Present.
Peter Katz.
Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Susan Kanter.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is D1, adoption of minutes for a special meeting of Tuesday, May 19, 2020. Do I have a motion? Betsy, second. Susan? Is there any discussion of the minutes? If not, can we call a roll for approval?
Sure. Beth Behrend.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yeah.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Kanter.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to the Student Board Members Report. We have Charlie Biggs and Mateo Constantine on the line with us. Would you guys want to give your report, please?
Good evening, everyone. So Charlie and I are going to begin tonight by discussing some of the events Student Council has had in the works since our last Student Council meeting on April 29, and focus on some of the positives of this pandemic rather than the negatives. So our Dean of Students, Mrs. Ligas, has asked and organized PHS trivia on Tuesdays over the past few weeks, which has been a great way to see some familiar faces and also learn some new things about PHS. Student Council has also hosted a virtual karaoke night for our juniors and seniors that would be on what would have been prom night a few weeks ago. It was a fun little way to encourage our upperclassmen to kind of stay positive even during this time of quarantine. For our seniors, Student Council decided to put its own twist on senior profiles by creating senior baseball cards, and these cards include our post-secondary plans, favorite subjects, favorite food, and what we're planning to do in college as well. I was wondering if you'd like to see it. I could also share my screen, but if you have to move on, that's totally fine.
We'd love to see it.
Okay, I will pull it up. Here it is. How do I share my screen?
If it's easy.
You know what?
If not, maybe you could share it with the Board.
I will share with the Board. That's a good idea. Yeah, all right.
All right. I can continue while we figure that out. So obviously, we haven't had the opportunity to conduct our regular surveys, but just in other general news about what's happening in terms of like for seniors as we approach the end of the year. Sorry. There have been regular senior stakeholder meetings, which we think have been really good, and basically, the purpose of those has been to allow the students to kind of weigh in on what's happening towards the end of the year and how we can like make the most of the situation and figure out how to have as much of the end of the year as possible. AP exams were administered online over the past two weeks, and it didn't go horribly. There were, of course, issues, but everyone who had issues was like given an opportunity to retake exams, and there were kind, I feel like they were trying their best to be understanding about the difficulties regarding technology. Seniors, I think just today, have started being able to go to the school to get photos taken in their caps and gowns. The cap and gown pickup went smoothly. These are the baseball cards. This is just the format, and we'll talk about it in a second. And also, I think today or yesterday, Governor Murphy announced that he would be allowing in-person graduations that follow social distancing guidelines after July 6. And I think some members of Student Council brought that up with, I think, Ms. Ligas. But and while we don't have like an official survey about this yet, I think that a lot of people think that, or a lot of people would like to have an in-person graduation ceremony, but obviously, there's a lot of difficulties in this. July 6 is after the school year ends, so yeah. So I'll give it back to Mateo.
Thank you, Charlie. So this is, this is our template for the senior baseball cards. I thought you guys might just want to take a little bit of a look at it. It was one of our vice presidents of Student Council came up with this idea, and he just wanted to give the seniors a little bit of a twist rather than, you know, posting on Instagram or Facebook, just a photo on where you're going. He thought this would be a great way to put a spin on it. So you have their favorite subject, favorite food, favorite song. Your post-secondary plans are going to go in that blue area at the bottom, and your interests, and then a photo there in the two image spots. And yeah, that's, that's the gist of it. But that's what we're planning to do, and Mrs. Ligas has been posting them, I think she'll be posting a few more on our PHS Facebook page, just to kind of honor our seniors.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. Thanks for sharing your screen. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for our student reps? Okay. Thank you both for coming tonight and being with us. We've got a, we've got a full-packed meeting tonight. It's kind of exciting. Our next item is the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report, which is a consent item. And then I'm just going to give a quick remarks, I'm just giving a quick roadmap of the night because we have so much in this meeting. It's a blockbuster, and it's pretty exciting to be sitting here with all five of our principals, and we appreciate that you've joined us, and we can't, you know, we're really looking forward to hearing from you. Tonight, we're going to just, we've done our quick beginning minutes and things, and now we're going to do some gratitude for a community member, and there's a number of people here, including special guests, the mayor and some council persons, Mia Sax and David Cohen, who will make some comments. And we will then go on to Steve's superintendent report, which is going to be lots of information on what's going on with food and summer and restart. And Annie Kozick, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, will give us a presentation on remote learning and the surveys and how it's going, and we will be able to hear from our principals of the six schools, which we're really looking forward to. We will then have a bit of financial update from our business administrator. We will talk about what we know about the state funding situation. We will talk a little bit about referendum finances. We'll then go on to committee reports, which we might abbreviate tonight, given all that's going on, and hopefully attach. We will have our regular personnel agenda with some, some important appointments there, curriculum issues, and then we will talk about the bid award for the high school, which is going to be an interesting conversation. And before we begin, I just want to give a quick thanks to all of our teachers and admins and staff and students for continuing their hard work and flexibility and creativity in this extraordinary time. A special thanks to those who are working on plans for the year-end commemorations of our seniors, our eighth graders and our fifth graders. They continue to have changed requirements and circumstances, and we do appreciate their empathy and their thought for our children and how they're taking care in time to try to figure out how to do this in a way that is meaningful. And we are just grateful that our entire community, we are all being tested in many ways, from the board down to the students, and we appreciate that everyone is pulling together and working together on behalf of our students. Also then, just to speak to transition, Steve Cochran will update us on his goals on June 9 at our meeting to hear where we are with the goals that we had for last year and some of his thoughts probably looking ahead before he leaves us. Dr. Barry Galasso is joining us tonight and will be joining us, I think, for, for many meetings in June as he begins his transition to leadership in the district. And so we're grateful that we have him in place, and we look forward to having him join us for, for many of our, for our work this month. The Board is preparing to retain a firm to help us with the search for a permanent superintendent, which will be happening over the next five, six months, and perhaps longer, but that's a longer process, and we're just beginning that. And Daphna, did you want to say anything about the send-off, send-off details?
Sure. So as Beth stated, Annie and Steve will be leaving us on June 30. One of the celebrations for them to bid them adieu will be held on June 24. More details to follow. In the meantime, if you would like to share a video message with, for either Steve or Annie or both, you can do it. It should be attached to the agenda tonight, the links, but it's on tribute, and it's backslash Steve dash Cochran and backslash Annie dash Gonzalez dash Kozick. Or you can email a message to one or both of them at communications@princetonk12.org.
Thank you. Thank you, Daphna. So that's it for my, my part, and I'm going to pass it over to, we're going to do a statement of gratitude now. Jess?
Thanks, Beth. So the statement of gratitude and beginning our meetings with gratitude has just been a practice that we've initiated this year, and it started before the current COVID situation, but I think we've been especially grateful that we have this in place to give us a chance to set the tone for the meeting and to recognize the many members of our community who contribute so importantly to what we do here in this school district. So tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Betsy, actually, who has an introduction and welcome of the gratitude practice tonight.
I do. Thank you, Jess. It is an honor for me to share the Board of Education's gratitude to Dr. Stephanie Churney this evening. For many years, Stephanie has been a gentle but tireless advocate for the health and well-being of all children in the Princeton Public Schools, as well as the long-term sustainability of our planet. Just a little background, I met Stephanie on the first day of school at CP in 2011, when we had just moved to Princeton and my older son was starting the first grade. I distinctly remember meeting three people that day. My son's teacher, Mr. Lovinsky, the brand-new CP principal, Denise Grujshaz, and CPPTO President, Stephanie Churney. As PTO President, Stephanie was a force. From welcoming a new parent like me and quickly putting me to work, to leading an active board of longtime parent volunteers, she was a resource we all looked up to, who knew how to improve our school and our district. At CP, Stephanie was instrumental in the CP garden program and helped students beautify it one Earth Day with flowers made of yogurt containers. Stephanie is responsible for starting the compost program at CP and educating students and parents alike at events such as CP picnics. Stephanie was such a strong leader at CP and was so committed to this work that it was long into our friendship until I realized that Stephanie was also a pediatrician at Princeton Hospital. I had wondered how she knew so much about children's health, as she always used her professional knowledge and skills in the very best ways to meet the needs of our students. Over the years, Stephanie has been a friendly but firm advocate for healthy food offerings for all students, tirelessly meeting with board members, the wellness team, our food service organizations, and most recently, serving on Steve's aptly-named kitchen cabinet. Stephanie has helped craft the district's website, I'm sorry, wellness policy on the website, and has tangibly impacted the district's efforts to be green and sustainable, serving on the green team and providing leadership in this area at JW and PHS once her son graduated from CP. When Stephanie was told that the Board of Education would be offering their gratitude to her this evening, she said in typical Stephanie fashion, "The best way to do this would, would be to make sure that sustainability is on every facility's agenda from now on." And we are happy to report that thanks to her efforts, an update on sustainability efforts will be discussed at every facilities meeting. Finally, Stephanie, you're a kind, thoughtful person and a great friend. Principal Denise Grujshaz noted Stephanie would just often stop in at CP through the years to say hi and visit the office staff. She's been a great sounding board for me as a Board of Ed member, and one of my colleagues noted that when running for the Board, Stephanie was one of those citizens who asked to meet and offered the most substantive discussion about what is needed in our town. Stephanie Churney, you are a gift to our community, and we are so grateful for your wise leadership.
Thank you, Betsy. I think, yes, here we go. We do a big applause. We're going to keep going. This is going to go. Stephanie, it's not over by any means. Next, we are going to introduce our guest, our guest from the council. First, we have Mayor Liz Lampert.
Thank you. Although I think Mia Sax had also come to join from the council, and I think she had trouble logging on, so I can't see everybody. Mia, are you on? I think maybe go to somebody else first and then come back to us because we have a joint presentation.
Okay, we will.
I'm going to start without Mia.
Okay. And then I think, Matt, we would go to the public if anyone wants to make a comment. We can ask first, is there anyone on the Board who would also like to speak, or shall we go to the public?
I'll just say one thing, and I'll keep it to less than 30 seconds. So I just want to say, Stephanie, oh, the thing that struck me about and continues to strike me about Stephanie is that she has the courage of her convictions, and as Betsy said, she was very instrumental in our district's wellness policy. And when we had a prior food service provider, Stephanie would go and take pictures of how they were not fulfilling our policy, and she would mail them to the Board. So like, so we would get pictures of Doritos and Oreos, and she, she really is great. And, and I wish you the best, Stephanie.
Thank you, Daphna.
Beth, could I just jump in for a second?
Sure.
So I haven't known Stephanie as long as many other people, but in the couple of opportunities that I've had to, to meet with her and talk with her, I can testify to the fact that she is a powerhouse. There are a few more effective advocates for everything pertaining to sustainability than Stephanie. And I just wanted to clarify one thing. Stephanie did request that sustainability be placed on every facilities committee agenda, but she also asked whether it should be included in every agenda for every committee, feeling that it's a lens that we need to look through as we think about our children, as we think about how all of our schools operate, and as we think about, you know, life at this time on the planet. So I just wanted to, to make it clear that it's not just facilities.
Yep.
Stephanie wants us to think broadly and deeply.
Thank you. Okay. Liz, are you ready yet, or should we keep going?
I think we're ready because I see Mia.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Mia, do you want to kick things off?
Yes. Okay. Here's for Stephanie. Whereas Dr. Stephanie Churney, as a pediatrician, volunteer, and parent, has worked tirelessly over the past few decades to improve the health, well-being, and nourishment of Princeton's children, she has also spearheaded efforts to make Princeton's schools and community greener and to help its residents better towards the planet. In every aspect of her personal and professional life, Dr. Churney has striven to create a more just and equitable society and inspired others, including myself, to do the same. David?
Whereas Dr. Stephanie Churney has served her community in countless ways, including as vice chair of the Princeton Environmental Commission, as president of the Community Parks School PTO, as chair of the Princeton Green Schools Coalition, as a board member of the Princeton Nursery School, and as co-chair of her synagogue's Tikun Olam Social Action Committee, as a member of the Princeton Public Schools District Green Team, as a volunteer at the Princeton Breast Cancer Resource Center, and in all the many ways recounted in greater detail in the proclamation Princeton Council is proud to bring tonight to honor Stephanie. Liz?
Excellent. And... Liz, you're reading the last paragraph that starts...
I know. Yeah, I just have to make sure that I have all my screens in order here. Okay. Now, therefore, I, Liz Lampert, Mayor of Princeton, County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, on behalf of the Princeton Council, do hereby recognize Dr. Stephanie Churney for her dedicated service to our community and to the health and well-being of his residents, and express our gratitude for her wise leadership, tireless advocacy, and for her compassionate spirit. And furthermore, do hereby call upon the citizens, upon all the citizens, to hail Stephanie's outstanding service to the Princeton community with boisterous cheering and sustained applause and proclaim May 26, 2020, and the municipality of Princeton as Dr. Stephanie Churney Day. Congratulations.
Stephanie, it's an honor and a privilege to be able to do this for you, and it means a lot to us, all of us, and all of us as an organization, to have people like you. You're an inspiration since I met you when we first ran the gardens together 20, 10 years ago, and then somehow became PTO presidents because no one else would do it. I've enjoyed every minute with you, so thank you. Matt, do you want to go on to maybe ask if we have any public comment on this specific item?
Yeah, I think there are. I think there are. Hold on.
And before, unfortunately, we have a council meeting tonight, too, so we actually interrupted our council meeting to come over here to do this presentation, but Mia, David, and I have to get back to our council meeting, so I think we're going to say, say goodnight. But thank you for including us in this, and thank you, Stephanie, for all you've done, not just for the schools, but for the whole community.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mia. Thank you, David, for coming to our meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks. Molly Jones, would you like to say something?
Yes. Hopefully, I can be seen now. On behalf of sustainable Princeton, I just want to add to these words of appreciation with our utmost respect for Dr. Stephanie Churney. She truly is so very passionate and a tireless advocate for sustainability and health of our community here in Princeton. She very much practices what she preaches, as you've probably seen her around town carrying her reusable containers as she goes to grab her takeout. In particular, I just want to mention the wonderful impact that she's had on a lot of the waste-related actions here in the community. She really set the groundwork for what's been included in the Princeton Climate Action Plan, so we're looking forward to continue to carry the torch ahead and continue to make progress on the great groundwork she's laid. So again, we just want to add our words of thanks and appreciation to you, Stephanie.
Thank you. It looks like Carrie Patterson-Bessler would like to speak.
I, I had the honor and pleasure of inheriting the culture change that Dr. Stephanie Churney spearheaded at Community Park Elementary and certainly all across the district. And now I've gotten to join in on what she's, she created and spearheaded at John Witherspoon Middle School. Stephanie's generous dedication, creative patience, and big-picture vision for changing culture has been a gift for our entire community. Stephanie brings all her life experiences to the table to create sustainable living, and her heart is at the center. It's really about the big picture. I'm forever grateful for the impact she has had on my own life, on my own children's lives, but most of all, our, our entire community's children's lives. Stephanie has truly paved the way because we now know that children have changed their parents' habits at home, and that is the true mark of creating a culture change that will stay and continue to grow. So thank you, thank you, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Carrie. Priscilla Hayes, hold on. Go ahead, Priscilla.
Thank you for letting me speak. I was the first garden educator at Community Park, and the position would have been unthinkable without Stephanie. She was amazing. She just went away and beyond everything in working with me and working with the kids. And I, one of my favorite things was when we had her son teach one of the classes, and that was a lot of fun. I just really, really value my time with her, and I'm so pleased that the Board is honoring her. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Moskowitz will be next.
Can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, just, all right. Thank you. Although I'm going to be repeating what many people have said, thank you for giving me the time to chime in. I'm honored to have known Stephanie and called her my friend since our early days at CP 11 years ago. She's been an incredible and supportive role model for me in her relentless efforts to make our school district a better place for our kids, teachers, and staff. Stephanie was leading the sustainability and wellness charge back in the day when those issues weren't even on most people's radars as important topics that needed to be addressed. She's been a tireless champion and an outspoken advocate for policy change and common sense initiatives that we all can do to benefit our district and community at large. From waste reduction and composting to improving the food in our cafeterias and making our school gardens an important aspect of the curriculum, Stephanie's fearlessness, uncompromising honesty, and ability to rally people to come together has helped everyone she knows work harder and be stronger advocates themselves. As a driving force for positive change in our district, she has inspired countless volunteers, and she has made all of us better because of her passion and selfless actions. Thank you, Stephanie, for everything you've done and continue to do. I am beyond grateful to you.
Thank you. Is there anyone, anyone else out there that would like to say something else? Oh, right. I got you. Lee, I'm getting an error message based on your software version. Let me go to the next person. Alexandra Bar Cohen.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Stephanie, I'm going to speak directly to you. I like to say that you're the original waste diva. Simply put, you turned me on to trash. Your hard work at Community Park laid the foundation for everything that we did at Little Brook, from low-waste events to reusable classroom party baskets. You build community through sustainability and sustainability through community, which is the most resilient way to build, and my most favorite. I am as grateful for your generous mentorship as I am for your friendship, and you make the world a much better place for having been in it. Thank you so much for everything that you do. You are an inspiration.
Kip, Kip Cherry. Kip? I was still trying to get, we, she might be able to speak now. I tried to promote her to a panelist, which you can do, apparently.
Okay, I think I'm okay.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm Kip Cherry. I just wanted to say thank you to Stephanie. I've spoken at many public meetings in a group with Stephanie, and I've always appreciated everything she's had to say, and I appreciate her stick-to-it-ness and her willingness to speak up when often other people are not. So I just want to say thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you. Lee, you should be able to, now, Lee Yonish. Technical difficulties. That? Steve, Steve Yonish.
Hi there, sorry. Okay, give me a second, thank you for accommodating me. I'm probably gonna repeat a lot of what people said, but I am speaking on behalf of Karen Nathan and myself, and Karen, Stephanie, and I became fast friends on the playground at Community Park about a decade ago, and in case you hadn't noticed, Stephanie is bursting with a sense of purpose. She was always conjuring up an important project, and because of her enthusiasm and our shared interests, Karen and I readily jumped on board. Together, excuse me one sec. Together, we championed school garden education, set up garden cleanup days, and developed a food education program for health classes, and later we formed the Green Schools Coalition, challenging the facilities committee to sign a new food service contract in order to improve lunchroom food throughout the district. I'm not sure how far we would have gotten without any of these endeavors, without Stephanie's passion. She kept us focused, organized, and engaged. She also kept us laughing throughout. We knew then, and we still know now, that it takes a very unique person to push the issues and the boundaries like she has, and inspire others to do the same, over and over again. We are so proud of Stephanie in all the ways in which she's advocated for worthy causes and underserved populations. We admire her ambition, especially when it comes to turning ideas into action, but we also want to acknowledge her humility, the fact that all of her work is done without fanfare, without the need for credit or thanks. Despite Stephanie's aversion to the spotlight, though, we're so happy to see her being recognized, because in living her values day after day, she truly makes the rest of us better people. Thank you to the Board of Education for honoring Stephanie this evening, and thank you to Stephanie for being the force that you are in our lives.
Thank you, Lee. I think Stephanie might want to say a word now, Matt? If you can get her in.
Yeah, give her the full promotion.
Yes, I should do that. I didn't know you could do that.
This is all just a test to see how good you are at all this, this hosting stuff, Matt, you're doing great.
Promoted Stephanie to panelist, and she should be able to talk. Are you there, Stephanie? She dropped out.
Hello?
You're live.
All right. Thank you. Well, wow. This is such a true honor. Thank you all for your very generous and heartfelt words, and for putting this together for me. Thank all of you on this call today for all of your efforts in leading the community. I know it's not easy. I am thrilled to see the Board of Education and Council working together on this, and I hope this collaboration continues. As you know, coordination and collaboration and communication have always been a priority for me, and there's a big laugh behind that. I just wanted to share some words about volunteering with students at Princeton Public Schools, as I think it sums up most of our.
We lost her, Matt. Maybe we could keep going, and then if Stephanie's able to rejoin us at our next comment, do you think that might make sense? Try to do it again?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can.
Could you hear what I said before?
No.
We lost you when you were talking about students, working with students.
Okay, thank you. So I said that, it's brief, that I was running with a friend the community outreach and Go Green Committees at CP, and even though it seemed like the committees had different goals, they were really one and the same. Helping a neighbor in need with food, clothes, or respecting our diversity, and helping our planet in need of repair and our attention. This is how we introduced many of our projects, and it was an easy mantra for students and adults alike. Since I may not be feeling well enough to be speaking or meeting with all of you much, I hope you can.
Maybe we could try again. But she's back, okay.
Oh, sorry, where did I end out, end off?
You're not able to speak with us.
Yeah, yeah. In search of Wi-Fi.
About now.
Better, better.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Ah, hi. Okay, could any of you hear anything I said?
Yeah, we saw the beginning, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't want to repeat myself too much, but it's, it's brief what I was saying. I really just want you to, well, I really just want to thank everyone for doing this and for working with me over all the years. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Okay, and, and I wa- Oh, no.
I guess we, maybe we can ask Stephanie to record it and send it to us, or, or write it down for us, and we'll, we can get it, because we really know that you mean to give us a good, good message, and I think we've got to keep going.
She's back.
You know what? That's a good idea, Beth, why don't I write it down?
Yeah, that would be really helpful.
And maybe you can read it, if that's okay?
I'm very happy to read it for you, that, that'd be great, let's do that. Thank you so much, Stephanie, we're so glad we can do this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
All right, bye-bye.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone, for participating in that, and as Jess and Betsy mentioned, this kind of gratitude, I think, really helps center us, and particularly in these times when we really have to focus on what's most important. So, I think next we go to Steve, update.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm just gonna, Stephanie, if you're still there, I just want you to know how much you are loved, and how much we, we know that all that you did came from a place of love, love for our, our children, love for our planet, and I had the good fortune to work with you these past six years, you made me a better leader, you made our community a better place, and you taught us all not only about issues of sustainability, but really about how to fight in a principled and passionate way for what you believe, and those are lessons that we all will cherish, so thank you. All right. There are three weeks more to the end of our school year, and as a district, we are very much focused on transitions, which is really the, the theme of my, my words tonight. We're focused on transitional events, such as graduation and our moving on ceremonies that help our students celebrate current relationships and accomplishments and look forward to, to new ones. We are focused on our transition of programs as we consider how we feed and educate our students over the summer, and certainly how we reopen our schools come next fall, and we are focused on the transition of people, particularly with regard to major administrative roles across our district. I want to recognize Dr. Galasso, our, our new interim superintendent, who has joined us again this evening, and with whom I had a wonderful nearly two-hour conversation on Friday to begin our transition process. I want to note that on the personnel agenda this evening is my recommendation for two new assistant principals to support the crucial efforts of our rapidly growing middle school, and I also look forward very much to announcing shortly my recommendation for acting assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction as we anticipate Annie Kosik's retirement at the end of, of this school year. So first, let me speak a little bit about the transitional event of PHS graduation. So as, as Charlie noted, you know, the, the governor made an announcement today allowing for an in-person graduation ceremony after July 6th. He also noted that the strict social distancing requirements for those ceremonies will be issued tomorrow, so Principal Baxter and I look forward to reviewing those requirements with our local health and law enforcement officials and determining what may be possible later this summer, recognizing, of course, that, that not all of our students and staff will be available in July or will necessarily feel safe in attending events. In the meantime, we are still moving forward with plans for a virtual ceremony on June 16th. I want to thank Jessica Baxter and her committee of staff and parents who've come together to plan a safe and meaningful virtual graduation for our seniors, one that will incorporate pictures of each member of the class of 2020 in front of the high school tower, wearing their cap and gown and holding their diploma. So in the best-case scenario, we will hold our virtual ceremony on June 16th and also offer an opportunity or opportunities for students to come together in person for a celebration in July. Safety will continue to be our highest priority, and we will continue to keep everyone informed. Turning to the transition of our programs, I want to start with an important word about, about food. Today, we once again provided a week's worth of breakfasts and lunches to more than 500 of our students. Moving forward, we now have permission from the Department of Agriculture to offer meals to any student in the Princeton Public Schools who may need them, regardless of whether or not they officially qualify for free or reduced lunch. The provision from the Department of Agriculture acknowledges the rapidly changing financial circumstances of some families due to the COVID crisis. Families in need of meals for their children should simply send an email with the child's name and address to covidfood@princetonk12.org. Information is on our website under the heading "Resources and Notices." I also want to note that as a district, we are planning for the distribution of meals during the summer. As of last Friday, the Department of Agriculture had not released guidance as to whether our district would be reimbursed for those meals, so I actually wrote to Doug Fisher, the State Secretary of Agriculture, over the weekend, and lo and beholdy, he wrote me back. I explained that we were committed to providing those meals to our students, but without reimbursement from the Department of Agriculture, we would have to start working with our community partners to raise the $80,000 to $100,000 to provide them. He promised I would hear something today, and believe it or not, at 3 o'clock this afternoon, we learned that reimbursement provision under which we are currently operating will be extended over July and August. This is really wonderful news and allows us to continue the meal distribution approach that is currently working so well for our students, so we're grateful for that late-breaking news today. Our many summer school programs, K through 12, provide an important learning transition between this school year and next. We have more than 10 different programs supporting and challenging between 300 and 400 students typically, who have a wide variety of needs and aspirations. Approval for the staff of those programs is on the agenda tonight, and I want to thank the many teachers and assistants who will be devoting their time this summer to supporting our students. Please note that we are continuing to think about summer school in two phases. The first phase is virtual, and will begin June 29th and extend through the end of July. The goal during the virtual phase is to have as much live, one-to-one, and small-group interaction with teachers and students as possible. We are hoping for a second phase of instruction that will be in person within our buildings, and will take place at the very end of the summer, assuming our construction proceeds on schedule and current health restrictions are lifted, so more information about that possibility to come. I also want to note that we are looking forward to piloting this summer some tutoring supports for students, it's, that has been organized through Princeton University's Community House. Annie and I had a wonderful conversation with Charlotte Collins, who heads Community House last week. They are, they currently have 300 undergraduates, graduates, and other staff who are already trained and background-checked, and their hope is to eventually have 500 to 700. They envision two tutors for every one student, and we look forward to partnering with them this summer, and then hopefully scaling up the support once the school year begins. We're also continuing to plan for the beginning to that school year, which, given the continuation of the pandemic and the social distancing guidelines, is likely to look very different than any other year. Our reentry leadership team will be meeting again tomorrow to hear reports from our subcommittees, each of which is focused on one of three aspects of health. We have a subcommittee devoted to planning for the physical health of our students and staff, one planning for their, their emotional health, and a third committee is planning for the educational health of our students. How will we address their lost learning? How will we create new configurations of space, time, and instruction to ensure new learning? The superintendents throughout Mercer County are all focused on planning for our respective districts, and we will be meeting on Thursday together to share ideas and issues, and to advocate together for traditional guidance and regulatory changes from the state. Dr. Galasso will be joining us at that meeting, and I look forward to introducing him to his new colleagues and to having them benefit from his experience. Finally, on the topic of reopening, I want to commend to the board and to the public a new page on our website entitled "Reopening Our Schools." We will list there the members of our reentry leadership team, and we will also continue to populate that page with articles and ideas regarding reopening strategies being used throughout our country and throughout our world. As a community, we are going to be co-creating a new learning environment, and I want all of us to be as educated as possible about the challenges and the potential solutions. A review of our current approach to remote learning will absolutely inform our planning as we move forward with reopening our schools. Annie Kosik, along with our principals, and Mika Christofoli, will shortly be sharing with us the takeaways from a survey we conducted of parents about their experience and their children's experience with the remote learning. But before Annie presents, I want to share my recommendation for the person to serve as acting assistant principal and to take up the torch that Annie Kosik has held so high for our district these past three years. The board and I made the decision to appoint an acting assistant superintendent from within our district to ensure the Princeton Public Schools had a continuity of relationships and a continuity of direction during a transitional time in our district-level leadership. It is therefore, with tremendous pride, confidence, and gratitude, that I announce tonight my recommendation that Dr. Bob Ginsburg assume the role of acting assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction. Dr. Ginsburg, Bob is our most seasoned administrator. He knows our people, our programs, our community, and most importantly, he knows our mission. He will be an outstanding advocate for equity, innovation, and schools as places of joy. He will also be an outstanding source of wisdom and support to this board, to our staff, and to our new interim superintendent, Dr. Galasso, who will now become the other Dr. G. This will not be Bob's first time as assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, he actually served in the role once before in between principalships at Little Brook and Johnson Park. He will bring to the position decades of experience here in Princeton, as well as experience in East Brunswick, where he served as the supervisor of, of programs for the gifted and talented, and also experience from Brooklyn, where he was a teacher at multiple grade levels from kindergarten through junior high. I am incredibly grateful to Bob for his willingness to help shepherd our district through this current crisis and into what I truly believe will be a new era in the evolution of education. I'm also incredibly grateful to Bob for stepping away from Johnson Park, a school he dearly loves, in order to help the district as a whole. We will shortly begin an internal search for an acting principal at Johnson Park, who I hope we can appoint by the end of June. The district will then conduct a full and comprehensive search for a permanent principal, most likely in the spring of next year. Bob's contract still has to be technically approved by the county superintendent, so his actual appointment will happen at our next board meeting on June 9th. Regardless, Bob will officially assume his new duties as of July 1st. In the meantime, he will be zooming with Annie and with many others, broadening his understanding of the tremendous work that is happening across our district. I would just ask people to join me in congratulating Bob and, in offering him your support.
Way to go, Bob.
Well, I don't know if you want to say anything here, you could, if you like.
I, I just want to thank the board and, and you, Steve, for your confidence, I'm, I'm flattered, I'm humbled, and, and I'll do what I can to help out.
That's all we ask, Bob, and everyone is on your side, and we'll be pulling together with you, so.
Thank you.
All right, so and now, I'd like to ask Annie Kosik, our current and truly remarkable assistant superintendent for CNI, to share with us the highlights of the service. to share with us the highlights of the survey she conducted on remote learning, to determine what's working and what we can improve. And as was noted earlier, we are very fortunate to be joined tonight by our building principals and by Miki Christofoli, our director of People's Services, to provide their insights as well. So Annie, I know you have some slides you want to show and sort of talk us through the survey results.
Good evening, good evening. And Bob, congratulations, I'm delighted.
Yeah.
We'll be spending a lot of time together in the next few weeks. So I'm going to give you a remote learning update, but I want to focus that update on the parent survey that we completed. So Matt, I'm going to share my screen. Did that work?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, I'm at the wrong end. All right. So we completed a remote learning parent survey at the end of April. It was opened for about two and a half to three weeks. And even after that, we had a couple of parents who missed it, and so we allowed them to send their information in. We got 1,290 total responses, and out of those, 193 parents indicated that they had a child with an IEP. There were 115 that indicated their child had a 504, and there were 37 who said that their child was an English-language learner. The survey asked a number of questions that we were able to quantify the data, but we had three open-ended questions. And one was, what is going well during remote learning? What is most difficult for your child or your family? And then what would be helpful to improve your child's experience with remote learning? So I'm going to come back to those written comments a little bit later, and I'm going to ask the principals at that time to share some of their insights after they have read through and shared those comments with their staff. So in the survey, the first two questions we asked had to do with overall experience that their child was having with the remote learning and if the amount of work was sufficient or not. The next two questions talked about our technology platforms that we're using and the parents' ability to support their kids with those platforms and with the assignments. The next two were about live instruction and whether it was helpful or not and whether it should be a required component of remote learning should we return to it in the fall. And then the last we asked about communication, whether they felt that there was sufficient communication from the school, from the teacher, from the district. So what I'm going to do, because there are a lot of slides in this PowerPoint, the board, you all have copies of this, and there is an attachment to the agenda item for anyone who's watching and would like to follow along. I'm going to go through the high school slides so that you can see the questions and how they were set up. And then as I go to the other levels, I'm just going to pick out a few slides to share, and you can come back and look at it in more detail if you'd like. I'll share some highlights at the end, some learnings, and then open it up to our principals. So. So this is the first slide. There were 422 responses from the high school. And the first question was, "Overall, my child's remote learning experience has been..." And the choices were better-than-expected, less-than-expected, and the third one was getting better each week. And for the high school, 67% felt that it was better than they expected, but included in that are the people who said, well, 42% better-than-expected. The other 25% said getting better each week. And I think acknowledging that the teachers and staff were working very hard to find effective and efficient methods and approaches and that they could see the changes as the weeks went on. And then from this chart also, 63% felt, the second pie chart, 63% felt that the work was appropriate and the too little or too much work was about equal. That proved to be consistent across all of the levels, as you'll see. The next two questions were about navigating platforms and supporting kids with their assignments and with the navigation of those platforms. At the high school, 81% found that the kids were able to navigate the platforms quite successfully. About 8% did not. And then in terms of being able to support them, about 48% said that they were able to support their students. Interesting here is, we know that at the higher levels and at the high school level, kids are very tech-savvy, and so their ability to manage the platforms themselves is much easier, and there may or not be a necessity for parent support in that way. As we get to the younger grades, that, of course, is greater the need for parent support. We wanted to know about the live lessons and whether they were helpful or not. So many teachers were experimenting with Zoom lessons, with Microsoft Teams, ClassDojo. You may have heard of some of these. Their, the last one's slipping my mind. And so we wanted to know if they were beneficial to kids. And so for this one, 79% of the parents felt that the live lessons were helpful to their students. And then we wanted to know, well, should it be a required component of remote teaching? And it's important to know here that it says "component." So it doesn't mean that it would be required attendance, but should it be a required component? Should it be part of our remote schooling? And here we had a strong feeling that yes, it should be a required component. We were at 74% there. This was about communication from the child's teacher and then from the school and district. And here again, the communication from the teacher was about 37% sufficient. And again, thinking about that, much of the communication that teachers do with students at the high school level is directly with the student. And so there may not be as much communication between the teacher and the parent as there would be at a lower level where everything is sent to the parent and not to the student. Then we're looking at if the district, and of course, there was about 74% who felt that they were getting sufficient communication from the school and from the district. Here's where I want to jump down a little bit. Slide 7, okay. So there were 262 responses from the middle school. And the ones I wanted to show you in the other schools were the ability to navigate platforms and then the live lessons being helpful. So here we are at the middle school, and about 59% were positive that they were helpful. And we had about 79% who felt that they should be a required component. So this is at the middle school level. So live lessons and interactions, very positive results that they are helpful, and very positive response that they should be a required component. We've grouped the elementary schools together for this presentation, but we do have this broken out by elementary school, and each of the principals has the data from their particular school. So ability to navigate platforms at the elementary level, we were about 64% positive, and about 20% felt that it was not easy for children to do. Being able to support their children, 76% felt they were able to support, and about 12% did not. We were particularly interested to understand how live lessons either supported kids' learning or whether they weren't helpful and perhaps we needed to return to more work packets for kids. And so here, we had a number of families positively say that they were helpful, that these live lessons were helpful to their student. And then on this side, with it being a required component, there were 81% who felt that it should be a required component, opposed to about 9% who did not feel we should make it required for elementary school kids. These were very similar results to the middle school. Then we needed to look at the elementary grades. A kindergartner and a fifth grader are very different. Their technological skills are very different. So we wanted to look and see how parents reported for pre-k to two kids and three to five kids. So as you would expect, I'm sorry, jumped that slide. As you would expect, fewer children at this age are able to navigate the platforms on their own. And so we had about 30% of the parents pre-k to say that they had some difficulty navigating on their own. And yet, if you look at the parent's ability to support the child, that looks very different, of course. So parents are stepping up and helping their children quite a bit in order for them to be successful. And then this was interesting, too. So pre-k to, "Live lessons are helpful to my child." There were 84% who felt that they were helpful and just 5% who did not agree with that. And then "Live lessons being a required component." There were 77% felt that it should be required even at pre-k to. This is grades three through five. So this was consistent reporting in terms of overall experience was consistent with all other grades and levels. The amount of work, again, appropriate to my child. Okay, this is the one I want. So 76% were able to, felt that their third to fifth grader is able to navigate the platforms well. And 72% of the parents felt that they were able to help their children, while 14% felt it was difficult. Again, grades three to five, 91% feel that the live lessons are helpful. 86% feel that they should be required as a component. What we did then was to disaggregate the data a little bit more, and we looked at families who responded that they had a student with an IEP, a 504, or a student who is an English-language learner. So I'm just going to very quickly show you these slides, and you'll see there's a lot of consistency across levels and across groups. So there were about 23% who felt that their child needed some, needed some help navigating platforms. And we have... And the majority felt they were able to assist their students quite well. About 21% felt they were having difficulty doing that. Again, students with IEPs. 81% said that it was very helpful, the live lessons. And about 75% felt that they should be required components. These were students with 504s, the parent responses. 67% felt that their children were able to navigate the platforms quite well. And about 16% felt it was difficult. About 57% of parents were able to help their children with those platforms and with checking in on assignments. And these were ELL responses. 59% said it was easy to navigate. About 23% felt not. About 66% were able to support their children. And about the same number felt that they were not able to. Live lessons for ELL students were pretty important at 81%. And whether it should be required, about 75%. So as you can see, as we go through those slides, there was consistency across the schools, across the grades, across the levels. Because we know that technology is an issue in remote learning, I wanted to just share with you our mobile access program numbers. Our mobile access program provides devices for students who are income-eligible. And so we currently have out to our pre-k first graders about 40 iPads. So about 40 students have received iPads in grades pre-k to. MacBooks were given to second through 12th graders, and there were 342 are deployed right now. And then we have about 226 hotspots that have been given out as well. In addition, we found that there was a need for, there were other needs beyond our free and reduced-price lunch-ristored students. And so we loaned Chromebooks out to anyone who needed a Chromebook. And we have 116 out now between third and 12th grade. We wanted to also just let you know that technology assistance is provided to our students. Our tech department is answering emails and phone calls daily. We have school-based tech aids in each of the buildings, and we have a district-wide Spanish-speaking tech assistant who helps families who need translation when they need help with their devices. Any devices that have a problem while they're out, the student or parent simply needs to contact the tech office, and we can do a switch-out and get their, either repair their computer or replace it with one that is working. So what were our learnings and what are we using in our forward planning? We are in the process, and Steve will probably talk about it a little bit later, with our reentry planning. And we have several committees working to figure out what exactly it's going to look like, whether we stagger the return of our students, whether we stagger the days that children come to school, or whether we will need to be out for any length of time teaching remotely again. So in considering this data, we are making those decisions in committee groups. So these are some of the things we learned, that pretty much the feedback across all of the questions in the school levels was fairly consistent. Parents generally reported a better-than-expected experience across the grade levels, but noting that and acknowledging the work that the teachers and staff are doing to improve as we went along. We found that we need a more user-friendly platform and a consistent one across the district. We currently use Power School Learning as our basis for our learning management. And that Power School Learning, which will not be available to us next year, so we are in the process of looking at other possible management systems for the fall. We also found that the number of devices in a home may not equal the number of children in the home, and that may or may not present difficulty for the family. So we're looking at what we can do to help there. We found that a vast majority find that live instruction and interaction with teachers and classmates are helpful and that they think it should be a required component. And when we look at our lower and upper elementary, even though the lower elementary kids have a little bit more difficulty navigating the platforms, still seventy-seven percent of parents felt that it should be a required component of remote learning. When we look at the IEP 504 and English language learner responses, they were pretty consistent across, again, across the schools and grades, but there were a few notable areas to consider. So slightly more parents reported that their children were having difficulty navigating learning management platforms. Slightly more parents reported having difficulty supporting their children with assignments. And while it was slightly lower percentages than the general district responses, parents responded positively to the helpfulness of live instruction and believe that we should continue to include it. From the written comments, one of the things that we saw, when parents indicated that a more formal daily remote schedule would be helpful to them and to their families. And that came through pretty loud and clear in some of the written comments. We also know that we will need to provide professional development for our teachers, training for students around remote learning, around the technology used for remote learning and for parent education, as all of that is really fundamental to our planning for the fall. We need, we know we need to address both academic and social emotional health as we plan. One of the things that we will like to do is to do a second parent survey, one that will focus on the technology availability and needs as parents see it. And then from a parent perspective, what the reentry into our school building should look like or if, or what a range, the range of possibilities for returning in a hybrid fashion, given the uncertainty of the COVID pandemic. So here are the three questions that were open-ended. What is going well? What is most difficult for your child, family? What would be helpful to improve your child's experience with remote learning? And I'm going to turn it over and start with Jessica Baxter, Princeton High School principal, to sort of start the conversation. And then I invite the other principals and Mickey to to jump in as they see fit. And I will stop sharing so you can see everyone again.
Annie, you okay if I start?
Yep.
Okay, hi, everyone. I know Annie had asked if we could just present on our learnings and forward-thinking ideas from the survey. So I wrote a few things down. So try to follow me here. I just, I have some comments. You know, we were thrown into this impossible situation. And we had, teachers had two days to plan. And one of the issues, I think, with, you know, things have been going very well. The survey looks pretty good. However, when you read the open-ended comments, there, there's some things in there that we could improve on. And I think some of the issue is we went from teaching in person to completely remote in the middle of a year, actually almost three quarters of the way into the year. And that's really hard to plan for. It's not like people had time to plan their course beginning to end online because you would do that completely different. I think also it was, it started off, we're only going to be out for two weeks and it's going to be another two weeks. And then finally, you know, it kept being extended before it was being closed for the entire year. So that's, that was really hard as well for people. And I think, I think I asked for my staff and I got it. I asked for flexibility and understanding. I asked my staff to take care of kids and I really think they did a nice job with that and I'm very appreciative for that. I also got that from parents. The parents have been great. Issues that have come to me, we've worked together on them. And I'd like to continue to do that. As I read through the survey and I read it through a few times, all the concerns and all the compliments, I think they contradict each other. You have some parents saying there's too much work, some parents saying there's too little work. And they're all right. I think the teachers did well and are doing well. I think the students are doing well, but that's what our kids do. We know that. They're going to do the work. They're going to do it well, but the engagement piece is what I worry about. And I think that's what, as a board, you're worried about. I think that's what, as educators, we are worried about. Neither group is used to remote learning. I talk about the teachers, I talk about the students, I'm also talking about parents and educators. So I want to acknowledge this because remote learning, you know, we can deal with the instruction piece, but I think we need to acknowledge that we're in the middle of a global pandemic and everyone is stressed out. At the very least, it's stressful to, as a parent, you know, I have a kindergartner at home. That's a hard job. There's a reason I teach high school kids. Kindergarten is difficult. That's stressful. Plus, I'm a working parent. I can't imagine if I was still, if I had to go out of the home each day or if I had multiple kids who needed my help with their lessons. So I just want to acknowledge that. So I stress with my staff and with my families, the need for flexibility and communication. And I ask them to take care of kids and I think that they've been doing that very well. We did prioritize health and wellness. However, with that comes, we did not focus on standard practices or standard expectations for teachers. We were not being rigid, saying you had to Zoom every day. I had some recommendations for best practices. I do think teachers should be giving instruction to their kid. I do think they should see them, you know, see them in a Zoom session. And since I saw this survey, I have worked with PRA and I just want to say, they've been really wonderful in, you know, short-term and long-term goals with how to make this better for, you know, the three weeks ahead of us for ending the year. Because the three weeks, we're not going to fix all of this. But we do have to start planning for next year. And I think when I look at those pie charts, they're helpful. But really for the planning, it's the last three open-ended questions that we all need to take a look at and see what's working for people, what's not, and what's in the middle there. So I've been working with PRA and we do have a subcommittee of Annie's reentry group that Jason and I are working on with some teachers. And we're going to be looking at, and this is what I see for September. And what I'm hearing from the survey is that parents want face-to-face communication for their kids with teachers. They want communication and consistency. They just want to know what's going on. How can I help my kid? Because, you know, teenagers, they might know where to find things and maybe they're going there, maybe they're not. But parents want to know. I want to find something also in one central location. If you're, if you're going to Google Classroom or you're going somewhere else, fine. But you need to post on what we currently use, the LMS, so I can get the link, so I can go there, too. So I know what's due, when it's due. We need to talk about workload, you know, I'm hearing there's too much, I'm hearing there's too little. So what's the happy medium and does it depend on the subject or core subjects versus electives? We're going to talk about expectations for teachers, you know, such as workload, when to Zoom, where to post things, expectations for students. I'm hearing that from parents, too. A lot of parents are appreciative for the extra time their kids can sleep. But they also want us to hold kids accountable for particular hours and for attendance. And also going forward, and this is not just a remote learning piece, we need to look at a workload that's healthy for our staff and students. I know we're talking about a more formal schedule for times for people to meet. But I think for that to happen as a district, we need to make sure that everyone has devices in their house. Because I can't say that student A has to be on a Zoom call at nine o'clock if there's three other kids in the house that also have to be on a Zoom call at nine o'clock and it's required and they only have one device. So I think that's another thing, big picture, you have to think about. And finally, you know, I just want to say, our kids at the high school take eight classes. Nobody who takes online classes at any university or anything takes eight at a time. This is a heavy workload. It's one thing to do it in person, it's another thing to do it online. I've done one online class that I've taken as a student and I've taught, too. It's difficult and, and it's draining. And for our kids to have eight, you know, they have four a day, that's a lot. So we need to brainstorm that if this is what we want to continue for the fall, how often they have to have this workload and Zoom sessions? Because no child, I don't care how old you are, no child, no adult should be on a computer for seven hours a day. I think everyone would agree that, with that. What else? So I've addressed concerns that have come to me. I see some in the survey that, any individuals that have come to me, I've tried to work through. And that's not unique to remote learning, though. Out of this, I'm actually hoping we can use this and capitalize on this and be innovators. How can remote learning help our instruction, whether we're learning remotely or in the building? How can these experience, experiences help us prioritize wellness? You know, as parents now, we're seeing what our kids are doing. And if you think your kid's workload is too much, this is a really nice opportunity to look at your child's schedule choices for next year. That's one piece, but it's also nice for us to look as educators on what is too much work that we're giving. So I think a healthy workload needs to prioritize. And I think this experience could change teaching and learning for the better. You know, Steve talked about space and time and, you know, how that influences and is influenced by instruction is something we really need to be paying attention to and figuring out if we want to change that. And finally, I'll end because I'm joining on, but I just want to encourage parents, and I've said this throughout, reach out. If you have a concern or any question with remote learning or not, reach out to a counselor, a teacher, administrator. We like to hear from you and we, we're here to support you. So, so that's what I have to say. And I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. Jason, do you want to?
Hey, good evening, everybody. How are you? Nice to see so many of my colleagues. Hello to all of you. Hello to everybody who is participating in this meeting in their own remote locations. And of course, to everybody who's going to be watching some of this on recording throughout the course of the week. This has been a real process, to say the least. I want to start, as Jessica did, by commending the staff of John Witherspoon Middle School. When you look at the feedback, the comments from families, there was a genuine understanding that this was a major lift. I think that everybody understands that when you get into this field of work, you get into this field of work to be with kids, to interact with kids. You develop colleagues, you develop close collegial relationships with your colleagues. And suddenly, all of that has been completely washed away. And you are all working from this sort of silo sort of atmosphere. And the initial feedback that we received, I think, was really positive for, people couldn't believe that we managed to do this and convert to online. I was grateful for that acknowledgement. And again, I want to say to the staff of JW, who really stepped up and my counselors, like, you really have done an amazing job. Like Jessica, at the beginning, we didn't put a lot of parameters on it. We wanted people to step outside their comfort zone, experiment, try to do some new things. I think in that sort of space that we created for people to grow, they have. Everybody is coming through this experience with more technological savvy and I think a greater appreciation in a lot of ways for the need to be clear in communication, even when they bring it back to the classroom. More on that later. One of the questions besides what went well, and I do know that when we're talking about what went well, I think that initially, students who were really self-motivated were able to take to this faster than some of our students who may be still learning those skills of executive functioning. Parents really highlighted some of their children's, and I think parents are in awe of the way their kids interact with their, their teachers and the way that our kids sort of respond. Kids are resilient. And, and there was initial grateful sort of gesture for anybody who jumped right on and made sure that that live interaction didn't, didn't completely go away. And people tried Google Meets and Zoom. And, and it was, I think, recognized by the community. So I just, I can't say enough about our beginning efforts, that again, very short notice. I think when we start talking about what is difficult or challenging, I, as Jessica, I think, led really well with, that varies family to family. As Annie's data supports, you have families that are able to be closely supporting their child and you have other families that have other commitments and other obligations. And there are things happening in the world as a result of this pandemic. Hunger, joblessness, families struggling, families being ill. And to really, again, echo what Jessica said, and I owe Jessica a lot of credit for our beginning schedule as well. There is no way that we could currently function running every single class in a remote fashion every single day. Acknowledging at the same time that the feedback does seem to indicate that people are looking for a bit more structure going forward. And then, of course, besides family to family, what's challenging is just the social piece. We began tonight hearing from Charlie Biggs and him talking about the different things that kids are doing right now to try to think about how we're, how we can celebrate. And no matter whether this is a year of a big celebration, like a senior or an eighth grader or a fifth grader, all kids are missing that socialization and all kids are missing things right now that they take to heart. So we need to keep that in mind. And I've heard references to the different committee work that's going on. What, what, what kind of work do we need to do to welcome kids back next year is the next focus? And if that means building some semblance of a, of a remote learning structure, the way that we have this year, then, you know, we need to accept this feedback and really dive into it and make the appropriate adjustments. I think finally, in terms of what would be helpful, I think you heard Annie mention this. I think people are looking for a more streamlined approach that is a little more navigable. We've done all the experimenting with platforms. I think now it's time to rein some of that in and look at the different platforms that do some of the same things and try to create more consistency, more congruence. We began collecting data via the student survey, parent survey, staff survey, right after the first few weeks of remote learning. But I really want to take this opportunity to thank my colleagues, Dr. Christina Donovan, Beth Murren, and Tim Charleston for their collaboration on creating the first remote schedule. I think we all have become very used to this Zoom medium. But if you can think back to Thursday, March 12th, when you were still a little new to this, maybe you were on a couple of remote meetings a year. You know, there we were on March 12th for four hours on the computer, thinking about what a schedule looks like for our staff and students and families that makes sense. And I do think it's incumbent upon us to think about what the next iteration of this is going to look like. And, and to make sure that, that we're building from here. And if it turns out that we're not, we're going to be able to operate in a regular fashion in September, we'll all be grateful. But I think the lessons learned from this have all put more tools in people's toolboxes. And I think there's going to be a widened horizon about what it means to interact with kids. Thank you.
Elementary principals?
I'll offer a few thoughts and certainly I echo so much of what Jessica and Jason said. The first is how impressed I've been with our staff and our parents. And, you know, overwhelmingly, the message has been one of flexibility and understanding and empathy and cooperation. And, you know, you see that in the surveys, you know, when we look at the surveys, Annie showed the pie charts and eighty percent think this way and there are a few that think the opposite way. And, you know, we tried our best, like we do with anything, to sort of thread the needle on that. And so I really am appreciative, I think, of the values of empathy that our folks have shown. Some of our teachers at Riverside have started using the term crisis teaching because that's really what this is. And I think crisis in the sense of not only what's going on in the world, but the way that this is affecting children and families. And that's been so hard for them, I think, for staff members, and I see it in my own house, my own kids, to navigate. And as Jason just mentioned, the lack of relationships, the lack of opportunities to socialize. And that's something that's really hard for us to figure out with these different family structures and dynamics, how to frame learning in a way that meets those needs. Those social emotional wellness needs is so important. I think that, as Jessica mentioned, tech availability is so important moving forward. And, you know, as we think about next year, whether it's a full move to remote learning. And, you know, as we think about next year, whether it's a full move to remote learning again or whether it's a hybrid approach, or, you know, whether we have school, but then we have a certain population of kids or staff members who, for various reasons, feel like they cannot be in the building. You know, what are we going to do? And so what have we learned from this, you know, to make that work for them? So I think that's important. I think that one of the things that I noticed in the past eight, 10 weeks, whatever it is, is how much easier teachers who were tech savvy made the transition. And I think we're now at the point where, you know, we had two weeks, I think Jessica said, and then four weeks. And so now I think we're at the point where there's sort of a comfort level across the staff that wasn't there right at the beginning. And I think that's been one sort of factor that's taken a while to sort of iron out. And I think now that's much higher. One of the pieces of feedback we got, both positive and negative, was they love the interactive face-to-face Zoom meetings with the teacher, whether that's one-on-one, small group, whole class. You know, and a lot of parents want even more of that. And so, you know, it's just trying to find the right balance and what's possible. And so that's sort of the, one of the big takeaways I had. The reentry that Annie has mentioned and Steve mentioned that we're working on, you know, there are lots of things to consider. In some ways, we're kind of planning for the normal opening, but then we're trying to plan two or three scenarios for whatever the situation is like at the beginning of the year. You know, is that a staggered schedule? Is it half the kids can come one day and half the next? Is it, we don't know. And so that's what this committee and all the subcommittees are thinking through right now. But a big piece of that is thinking through what we've learned from this, which is tech availability. There have been a lot of platforms that elementary teachers have used that are free during the pandemic. And so another big question mark is if we're going to go to something like this again or might need to go to this again, you know, what's the scenario there? Are we going to be paying for those platforms because they may not be free anymore? So there's a lot of sort of things that we're trying to consider and trying to take this feedback that came our way and do the best we can to honor those sentiments.
Whoever next. Bob, did you?
Sure. Earlier this month was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I had a parent who sent me a cartoon, a Charlie Brown cartoon. It had a lioness, I'm sorry, it had Charlie Brown, a penis cartoon. It had Charlie Brown and Peppermint Patty sitting under a tree, their backs were to the trunk, and Peppermint Patty was musing out loud, "I wonder what teachers make." And Charlie Brown's response was, "They make a difference, Peppermint Patty, they make a difference." And I think that that's what we've found out through this experience. And I think parents have found that out, too. In the surveys, we had over 100 respondents at Johnson Park, and I think the overwhelming response was that everyone was positive. And they recognized the teacher's effort, they recognized their dedication, they recognized their creativity. And they recognized the challenges the teachers faced. Just as one example, I have a first grade teacher who herself has three elementary school-aged children at home and is pregnant, and she had to teach and take care of her own kids at the same time. So I think the parents recognize that as a real challenge as well. And going forward, we're going to have to figure out how we do those things if, in fact, people start going back to work, but we have to stay remote. How are we going to handle that when parents aren't around to help their kids? I thought also the parent comments that we received, all but one parent, were really respectful. They offered us suggestions, which I think are helpful. And one of my takeaways from this is that we need to take these surveys and the conclusions you're hearing tonight and all that, and I'm not going to repeat other people's conclusions because they're the same for us, something that we need to hand over to. Maridula has a reentry committee that she's running on professional development. We have to take a look at what we're picking up from this survey and build that into professional development. And I think we have to expand professional development, not only for teachers, but one of the things we're picking up from that survey is that we need to do some training with parents, too. If we expect them to support their children with technology, then we need to do some training with parents, too. So I think that's something that we have to consider. And one of the other things I'm concerned about is the people, although we had over 100 respondents, that means we had over 200 who didn't respond. And my concern is, what are their needs? And are their children some of the ones who are not showing up regularly? And they're the ones who are not necessarily answering? And we're not getting an accurate picture of some of the things that those folks need? So we need to keep in our minds our underserved populations and make sure that we're serving them. And I think this whole pandemic thing, and we're going to have to be looking at new ways of doing things, this is our chance to keep equity in front of us and as a priority as we remodel and redevelop and restructure what we're doing, so.
Thanks, Bob. Danine or Louis would like to go first?
Danine, if you want to go, go ahead. I can go if not. Okay, all right. Well, I want to kind of echo a lot of what was said. You know, I really want to begin by just recognizing this tremendous traumatic, extended traumatic event that we have all had to endure and the response that came from it. You know, right from the get-go, two days' notice, and bam, we're virtual. Yet, we didn't have the warning, so to speak, to get ourselves ready for that, which made life very difficult. But the teaching staff, the faculty, everyone that I have come across and spoken to, the children, the parents, I think, I just want to send kudos to everybody because in this time, my God, you are doing it. You know, whether you realize it, whether you think it's difficult, whether you think this is okay, you are doing it, you're doing what's best for your kids, you're doing what's best for yourself. And that's all that I've ever asked from all of my colleagues that I work with and at Littlebrook, that we just think about the kids first, right? And if I look at this whole situation through the lens of a child, my gosh, I've lost my friends, like, the socialization, the time to share stories about Roblox and Legos and the new movies that are out. I'm missing that, and I want that back. And it's very hard to get that when you're doing it virtually. And just the teacher's presence in the classroom is so powerful to all of our kids. You know, they look forward to it, that's their home, their consistency every day, that they've got that teacher pushing for them, caring for them, making sure that they're doing what they can that is best for everybody involved. So I just think, you know, I want to, again, just say kudos to the entire stakeholders of Princeton and, you know, Littlebrook, an extra shout-out for everything that we've done and that you're doing because it is making a difference. You know, nobody could have planned for this six months ago, we didn't know, and look where we are. And from change comes a world of learning. And boy, have we learned a lot, right? You know, we began by just saying, okay, gather up what you can, let's plan for two weeks. And then it became a lot of change, a lot of shifting. We're extending this. You can't come back into the school. You can come back for this, that, and the other thing. Now we have to, you know, try to go from using Zoom, and maybe it wasn't the best fit for you, so you tried something different. Now there's platforms that have to be navigated. And, you know, we have families, children, staff members, administrators that are not savvy in all of these platforms. So I think one big draw that I get from this is the professional development that we need to make sure that we are all growing together on, as Annie mentioned, that single learning platform is going to be huge as we move forward, right? As part of the Professional Development Committee with Maridula, that's what we talked about today in our very first meeting, she and I, right? The need for technology, professional development, how to address the social, emotional, learning, and equity pieces for the children, for the families, for the staff. We can't forget the staff, they are coming back, and it is going to be like brand-new, right? Because we don't know what it looks like yet, so we want to make sure we take care of everyone. And Bob, to your point, I mentioned, let's do what I call Parent Institutes because what I got from my comments is that we need information on how to do this, right? And that's something, right, in hindsight, okay, yeah, that's something we can do. That's something we can change moving forward if we're going to continue in this virtual learning, right? As far as other feedback from the survey, you know, I got everything from there are too many Zooms, to there are not enough Zooms, to there's plenty of teacher time, to there's not enough teacher time. You know, the need for feedback, more live lessons, you know. But one thing that came through in all of it is just the amount of pressure that the parents are feeling, right? And that's going to spill over to the children, right? And I think about the children and what they're getting, right? So I think we can do a better job in helping the children, the teachers, and the families with dealing with these kinds of situations, should we be continuing this, right? Because there's a lot, there's a lot we can grow from here. Looking at other feedback, right, is what would improve, right? I think there are some systematic changes that need to take place, right? You know, we can start with the number of devices per family, the professional development that's necessary to make this successful. We have to also think about those families who cannot do some of the things that we may be asking, right? If there's something that needs to be printed, you know, we have to start thinking, we have families that can't print, they don't have printers available. We have to look at it through the equity lens. Also, the level of proficiency in just using the actual curriculum that we have, right, is let's focus on that. Let's build everyone's capacity to be able to pull right from that curriculum to set that forward and continue the learning path for the students. Other things, you know, parents did acknowledge, oh, my gosh, this must have been incredibly difficult, which, yes, I think we could all agree, it was incredibly difficult. They're looking for schedules, you know, they're looking for a mix of hard copy work to do and virtual work to do. You know, and more direct, like, one-on-one or small group instruction, right? And this goes back to the parameters piece, right? If we had said, you're expected, you know, to kind of do an hour of this each day, then that would have made it easier for us to schedule. But for right now, the teachers have gone and done what is best for their students' needs, and I applaud them for that. But we do need to kind of narrow that down and get us all moving in the same direction. What, you know, when I look at the pages of what's going well, I mean, my gosh, there are so many wonderful compliments in here, you know. But most of them go back to the teachers, right? The teachers have taken this extremely challenging assignment and have just done an absolutely magnificent job to get their students to where they need to be. I am so proud of not only my teachers and my colleagues at Littlebrook, right, but just the job that I'm seeing all around in education. My wife is an educator, so I get to see what other districts are doing as well, you know. So I think, you know, when this is all said and done, you know, maybe Dr. Galasso is here, and we can give the teachers an extra day off next year or something as a kind of a reward. But, you know, we're going to take this, we're going to grow, we're going to make some changes. We're doing a lot of things extremely well. The teachers are reaching out to the children, the children are sending emails and pictures to me. I'm loving looking at their little videos that they do. And I just, I really miss everybody, and I can't wait for all of us to kind of get back together in the same room, in the same house, and let's start to build this process moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Beth, I know we're way over time. I wanted to give Danine and Mickey a chance, if that's all right, to say something quickly, or, is that all right?
Go ahead, please, yes.
Danine?
Sure, I'll go really quick because I feel like I should be putting on a Go Noodle video and making everybody stand up and dance around a little bit, which is what we do at elementary school to keep ourselves engaged. So a couple of takeaways for me, I echo what all of my colleagues have said so beautifully in acknowledging the work of the teachers. I'd also like to acknowledge the work of some of our power professionals who have partnered with our teachers to make learning accessible to kids, to the people who are working in the main office, who tirelessly go in and show up and help hand out devices or make sure that things are getting done in the buildings. My comment about elementary school is this, and I echo again what's been said. The survey results have been very similar across the board. We know what works and what doesn't work. But what I see as very unique for elementary school is this. There is not this sort of isolation of subject matters or contents. And Jason, I think, started to talk about this, and Jessica talked about it at the upper levels. Where, you know, taking eight classes or courses at the same time is hard for a high school student or a middle school student. But in elementary school, what is unique about that experience is that the learning is interdisciplinary. It's integrated, the subjects overlap, and the teacher knows the child as a whole student and can tap into a teachable moment that relates to mathematics when they're doing reading. They can talk about science while they're doing something, you know, in another discipline like mathematics. That experience is largely lost, I think, in this platform. And I think that's what makes it the hardest for the younger children, that isolation of content areas isn't really great for kids. So that's what I see as the biggest challenge and how to improve that for our kids. All the other things like schedules and technology and protocols and expectations, all that stuff matters. But that's my sort of big learning on this whole experience and the difference for our youngest learners. My other concern is over equity in a very big way. And when we look at the participation of our Ls and the fact that we have 30-some-odd responders and we're taking, you know, that very small segment to learn from, we need to be able to hear their voices and understand how to help them, I think, in a very specialized way. And I would really be interested in hearing the results from a teacher survey to understand what teachers are really seeing. I feel like they're the closest to this, the parents are on the other side of the glass, so to speak. But it would be really important to, as we work through those committees, to learn from those folks. So, thank you.
Mickey, is there anything you wanted to add?
Sure, I don't want to repeat a lot of what was said, but in the special education survey, it does represent a lot of the comments that were made. But of course, because of the challenges of some of the learners, it's amplified because it is hard to be home and not have those special strategies maybe special education teachers have, figuring out how to help your child organize, you know, working with reluctant learners. It's a hard task, and I think we really do need to thank our parents for all the hard work that they're doing with our students, in addition to our teachers. You know, we know our teachers are working like 14-hour days. It's incredible the amount of work that it takes to put all this together. I know for our special education students, I got a chance to go through it, although I couldn't read this word-for-word yet. But a lot of what I read in here is similar to the feedback we've been getting in all of the meetings that we're in with parents and special ed PTO. It's, you know, the social interactions, a lack of ability to be with others and continue to work on those social skills and have that interaction with our peers, social emotional learning. Time management and organization has been very tough for a lot of kids. Some of the feedback that we've gotten and it's represented in the survey is about having to go from all these different platforms and for our kids who are challenged with executive function or, you know, have ADHD, this really is a hard environment. So we're taking a lot of that learning that we've gotten from parent feedback already and also, you know, that I know is represented in the survey from going through it and changing the way we're doing things. So like, for instance, our extended school year program, we're making sure that all of those meetings are at the same time every day. You don't have to figure out, do I have to be on at 12 o'clock or 11 o'clock, or, you know, is it change? You don't have to figure out, do I have to be on at twelve o'clock or eleven o'clock or, you know, is it changing? We're trying to have one, um, Zoom meeting, so you only have to connect once. And using the breakout sessions so that, you know, if a teacher is working with a group of students and a speech therapist is coming to work with a couple of kids, they can just go to a breakout session in the same Zoom environment. So we're looking at all of those things. We're also building in executive function lessons over the summer, social, well, we do social skills every summer. We do that as a push-in. We're doing that again this year. And we're going to do, um, social emotional learning lessons and trying to build up the social skills and also addressing the fact that this has been traumatic for our kids. And trying to, um, help build some resiliency in our kids as we can, the best we can in the summer. I think the groups that we're most concerned about, of course, we're concerned about all students, but our students in the autism program are of great concern to us. So if there's any group that if we can bring kids back early before school starts, we will be focusing on those students, students in our M D programs. It's been a challenge. I know parents are appreciative of the work teachers are doing. A lot of our autism teachers are working one-on-one with students throughout the day. They're, they're connecting our students with a paraprofessional for additional support. But it, it's a lot and, you know, the, the behavioral work that we can do in the schools to help support our students and help them, um, you know, make changes in their own behaviors and communications and social skills. You can't do that in a remote environment, so it's, it's, it's a challenge. So those are like the big takeaways of this. I'm anxious to dig into all of this information and share it with the supervisors, share it with the teachers. Um, and continue to learn from this. From this, we may develop another parent survey. But there's a lot here and when I go through, I mean, there's seven pages of feedback. That's a lot of information. Um, and, but I think at the end of the school year, once parents have a chance to breathe, might be another time to really do something specific for special education.
Thank you. Thanks, Mickey. So just, I'd like to just end by just saying that we've got a lot of planning to do ahead of us and parent feedback is critical to that work. Uh, so we will be doing other surveys of parents. But we also know that the teacher's voice is integral to everything that we do. So, um, teachers are part of our reentry committees and we will be surveying all of the teachers to provide us with some feedback about their experiences, what they found works, what professional development they think they, they need and what resources we may need to, to add to what we already have for, for the fall. So a lot of work ahead of us, but it's exciting work. And, uh, we're grateful to the parents who did respond to the survey. And, um, you know, we will continue to, to work at getting a broader, broader perspective. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Annie. We really, really appreciate hearing from all of you and, and especially having the principals and Mickey hearing directly from you. I think a few of our board members might have some comments. Daphne, you had your hand up?
Sure. Thanks. Um, so Annie, thank you very much for that and thank you to all the principals for being on tonight. And, um, so I have a couple of questions, but my first one is have any of you principals engaged with kids to see, get feedback from them on how they're doing?
I, I periodically, uh, visit with classrooms and, and hang out with them or listen to lessons and stuff. So I've gotten a sense of, uh, the difficulty is when I go, then there may be only twelve kids when there's a class of eighteen there and that again is part of the concern I was raising that not everybody shows up for good reasons that other people have mentioned. Those who are on there, they, they crave seeing each other. They crave seeing their teachers. I think the personal touch is really the important thing that's helping keep them going and I think parents feel that way as well.
Can I answer as well? So at the high school, I think when we were three weeks in, we did a remote learning survey with the students and actually I think it might be a good idea um, at the high school level to gather feedback. Maybe it's the same survey, Annie, that you did with the parents for the students to answer. Because, you know, our high school kids, they give great feedback. I, I really like their voice. Um, you know, I go to Zooms as well, but I much prefer, um, the Tuesday trivia's with students. It's kind of funny when kids start messaging you or using the chat feature on Zoom, um, they check in with you, but it's nice. It's a nice time to just put everything else away and have some fun for a half hour. And then they feel more comfortable after seeing you in that kind of light to then email you with questions or concerns about other things. We've done a lot with kids, um, especially with seniors lately with Zooming, um, get it, get, uh, gathering feedback. So, um, we've seen seniors a lot. I've been paying a lot of attention to seniors and I really want to focus on all of our students, but right now seniors have my priority. So, um, they come to the school for caps and gowns. Today I saw about, I think we had thirty-seven students come for graduation pictures. So it's just really nice to see kids and connect with them because at the end of the day, what Bob said, they crave, they, they spend so much time with us each day, sometimes more time than they spend with their parents. They're missing that. And I think more than anything that's going to come out of that is people are going to take a lot, they won't take things for granted anymore. You know, even today in the hot gowns, one girl commented to me, you know, I'm only in this gown for ten minutes today and it's hot out, but I wish it was the hour and a half of graduation. So, I'm trying to connect with kids as much as possible and that's why I think if we do a survey to gather their feedback, it, it'll be very helpful in planning for the future in, um, some best practices. So.
Yeah, I, I've been in on, uh, on Zoom lessons and I've also been talking to the kids with some, some through email. And, um, those of you, I spoke to a, a few of you a while back and I've been out delivering Chromebooks and speaking to the kids as I'm delivering Chromebooks. I actually, on one round of delivery of Chromebooks, sat in my car to do two different Zoom sessions as I was going from one location to the next. But it's certainly not enough, you know, uh, I miss walking into the classrooms and, and I miss all the kids and all the staff members and just, uh, having those just honest, regular conversations here and about their day. So, uh, I wish I could do more of it.
We had about a dozen eighth graders last week speaking to us about what they wanted to see out of promotion. Uh, we've been getting together for trivia on Fridays every week. It's a different theme. And of course I danced a couple of times all by myself on a couple of Saturday night dances and that was fun because they play all my favorite songs. So it's, it's been a, it's been challenging. I, I find that I miss the interaction as much as I think they all do.
And, and I know that teachers are inviting the supervisors into their Zoom lessons as well. So, um, supervisors have been, have, have been participating in a lot of those.
Other board questions? Yeah, Debbie.
Um, I, um, thank you so much. This is, it's the second time I've seen it, but it's so informative and it was really wonderful to hear from all the principals on your children and we do know that you love them all. Mickey, I wanted to know if we could send a survey directly to special education parents because this, this one is more general and I understand there were a lot of kids that had IEP, a lot of students had IEPs. But I feel our special education students are really getting lost. The articles that Daphne keeps sending me just break my heart. So I was hoping we could do one because I know back in April you mentioned, and I also wanted to ask if we could do another forum with the special education parents. And when we do have these surveys, we want to make sure we don't ask for people's email because I know people said that's why they didn't fill them out. You know, just to make sure that they're, uh, anonymous and everything. So I, those are just my two requests, but thank you guys. It's, it's.
Yeah. Debbie, just about the emails. Yeah, I, I guess when the survey was created, they added that piece to it. But that is nowhere in any of the data that anyone has seen. So any data I gave to the principals or supervisors, that was not part of what they received.
So Debbie, last year when we did a special ed parent survey last summer, um, it was sent out through Survey Monkey. There, there was no identifying information. Um, so we'll probably use that kind of format again.
No, I know we would never ask for that. I just remember the first time people said that they didn't fill it out because it asked for that. And I know you would never share that. That was not what I was going after at all.
Thank you. Thanks, Debbie. Anybody else?
Can I just, to the special ed piece, I, I think one of the ways in which I've seen this evolve, um, and certainly I agree that these are some of our most vulnerable kids um, in terms of getting lost with this, this medium of, of education. But I think that, um, with, with the, with the kids who have IEP needs, one of the things I've seen is how many of the instructional assistants have really become active on Zoom, working with these kids. Um, and that's certainly not a substitute. It doesn't make everything, you know, easy. But that's something that I've seen evolve, at least in our building. You know, the number of the instructional assistants have really taken that on to be either get on Zoom with the teacher and/or to then follow up with individual one-on-one work. And so that's something that obviously we'd like for all kids, but that, that's one way. I think we're trying to move in that direction, but I agree a survey is would be very, very helpful for where we're, where, where our gaps are in that process.
And can I just jump in and say my thanks to all of you? It is really truly wonderful to have you here. That's a benefit of a Zoom board meeting that you can all zoom in easily. Not that, that, not that it's easy to get up, give up your evening, but we appreciate it. Uh, when Annie shared this in student achievement, we all are very, uh, supportive of a survey of teachers. We really would like to support teachers in this work. So as we move forward, you know, we appreciate everything that everyone has done and we, and we know that we can do what, we, we need to do what we can to support teachers in this effort. So a survey would help us take those steps. So thank you.
I also just want to add to the thanks and appreciation, um, I think that we all feel to, to listen. And, and also, I'm also really heartened that I think we are all in agreement on this call that what we are so concerned about is the voices that we haven't heard. And that we, we, we have to work hard to, to, to find and to listen to and, and be creative about how we find those voices. And so, I hope that we can continue to do that as we continue to innovate and care and support and do all the things that, um, that I know everybody's trying to do. And I just appreciate that. I think as a district that, um, we're working, we're working together on this in order to try to make sure that we, we do hear all the voices that we can. I know everybody on this call wants to, to be, to be working toward that.
I know one specific question I just have in my mind is, is, and I mean, maybe it doesn't appropriate for each of you to talk about it tonight, but maybe we could get notified of it is how many kids are we losing? Like who, what kids haven't we found? I mean, I assume going remote, we've, we've just got kids that can't connect or that aren't, aren't part of the, you know, just don't get on. And I, I really want to know that as a board member. You know, it's, it's, it's the, it's not the happy news, but I think we need to understand, you know, who's, who's not participating at all and what we're trying to do about it.
So something I wanted to mention was that in our student surveys that we pushed out at JW, one of the ending questions was, do you want a counselor to call you this week? And the number crept up just a little bit every single week about who wanted a personal phone call. I also want to give credit to Trinidad Rodriguez, who is our family outreach coordinator, who has been filling me in on all of the work she's doing in personal connections with folks who need help. And I would be remiss if I didn't really, um, take this opportunity to appreciate Trinidad. But I, I think like everybody, you know, when you, the, the, the remote environment doesn't give you the same thing of, you know, when you see Lily or John in the second row and you can just see by their face or, you know, there's so much happens in that classroom environment. And I think we're all hoping to get back there soon.
I was going to say, I, I've only just personally had, had one kid that has just apparently not shown up at all. Um, and we've called the family, but, but I think what I'm hearing from teachers is we've gradually had more and more kids who are sort of disappearing, uh, for, for all are part of it, you know, that the, the excitement was there and as we get into late May and June, you know, they're not there for, for all the Zoom calls. And, and so those are the ones that are we losing them too early? And I think that's where the human element here is so important in this outreach.
Thank you. Thank you. This has been incredible, really helpful, really great to have you all here. I really appreciate it. I think we all do. We have a lot more to do tonight. So I guess, Steve, you want to keep going or what, what's next?
Yeah. So, um, it, thank you again to, um, to Annie, to Mickey, to all of our principals for, um, praise of your teachers, for an acknowledgement of, um, the need to hear from all voices, um, as we move forward, to look for ways to continue to improve and to hear from our, our teachers, our parents, our students. To, uh, to take the remote learning to the next level as we plan for the fall. What we want to do next is, um, shift a little bit to, uh, talk about the finances in our district and in the state. So we had a, a report, uh, from the treasurer's office on Friday afternoon, late Friday afternoon, providing an update on the state of the, um, the fiscal budget for the state of New Jersey for this remainder of this year and into twenty twenty-one. And there were some implications there for education. And Matt, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to say just a, a few words of takeaway from the report on Friday and what you see as the potential implications for, for us.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, as you mentioned, uh, it was called the report of the financial condition of the state's budget. And I was, uh, somewhat impressed that they put this together in, uh, you know, basically two months. Um, it's not a binding plan. But the, uh, you know, the ramifications for education, I think, we're, we're kind of sticking to, uh, Governor Murphy's core philosophies that he's been very pro education since, since he took over. There's a few takeaways. Basically, the, the plans a, as it was laid out, takes away the state aid increases, uh, for the twenty twenty-one budget. And also the additional twenty-five million dollars at the state level. They've been kind of putting in increments of twenty-five million dollars for the P E A, the preschool education program. That allowed us to get an extra class. So, so that class is at risk. And, uh, you know, judging by our increase in state aid, which was also, uh, slightly related to increased enrollment. And we still have a, a small one hundred and seven thousand dollars of adjustment aid kind of left over from the hold harmless days, uh, you know, since the state started funding the, uh, the model, as it's called, and, and S two and, and reshifting all those funds around the state. Uh, you know, we have a hundred and seven thousand dollars sitting there. Adjustment aid, which has basically been there for, for a while. So it looks like we have about three hundred thousand dollars of state aid at risk at this point, based on this report. And, uh, they're also going to delay. So, uh, some of the funding mechanisms, they're delaying the extraordinary aid payment for the current year, which is, uh, actually was due today, but they extended it a week. So, uh, Mickey and I worked hard on that and then they extended it a week, but we got the work done. So that's good. Uh, they're, they're going to extend that payment till October. You know, kind of kicking the bucket down the road a little to help in that current year. They're, they're creating an extra three months for, uh, the fiscal twenty twenty and it'll be a nine-month, uh, fiscal twenty-one. But, so all that said and done, but the plan is to create a four hundred million dollar COVID relief fund for, uh, public education. Secondary public edu, you know, public education in the state. So kind of a wash overall if you added up the state with the, you know, with this plan. It would be based on two thousand nineteen students, which was the most recent data I could get on the state website. It would be, you know, roughly two hundred seventy dollars, two hundred seventy-nine dollars per student. The thought is that they probably would allocate it based on a student per student basis. But, you know, we don't know yet. So it's certainly a non-binding plan, but it was, uh, you know, I have to say objectively, I was rather impressed that they got this out on a short timeframe. I don't know if anyone else has any questions about it at this point. It's, uh, but it, it was positive news in my mind.
Matt, what, uh, so two, two notes. You said, based on your look at the report, that we might have three hundred thousand dollars in aid at, at risk. And then I heard you say that the four hundred million dollars of COVID relief, if it was allocated on a per student basis, you provided a number and I multiplied that by our three thousand nine hundred and twenty students, I think that's the right number and got a number around one point one million. So is it, is it? I, I, I guess, considering where many of us were thinking a few weeks and a month ago, I, I would not characterize this as good news. But it, it, I, I think it's actually pretty encouraging. And I think the aid amount, if it is distributed that way, would go a long way towards helping us, you know, really step up and do some things to operate in the, with the, in the challenging environment we're likely to have in the fall. But you, you mentioned we can't rely on this. What is the process? You know, what, this, is this something that the governor has put out is, uh, Is, should we think it's directionally accurate? Does the Senate Majority Leader, has he weighed in at all? I'm just curious about whether we can plan based on the report.
I wouldn't plan on it until we get the final budget addressed by August 25th. But it seems to be a positive step in the right direction.
So Matt, I guess I viewed the report slightly more nuanced. They admitted to a basic $10 billion shortfall in revenue.
Yep.
2.7 billion, I think, for the remaining months of this year and 7.3 or so for the next fiscal year. And so I viewed their proposed solutions without a funding plan more aspirationally. And, you know, because there was not a clear plan to, you know, to fill that $10 billion hole, whether it become, whether from a bond issue, whether from tax increases, whether from federal funds or some combination of all of those things. So maybe that's what has to be worked out between now and August before we can have some certainty around the plan. Is that an accurate way to, or is that a perspective?
Yeah, there's nothing binding about the report and it was an extremely grim portrait of a state that had, you know, started to, we had started to sort of improve our financial situation as a state. It just appeared to me from the plan that he's not, you know, going after education as much as he could have. And it's preliminary, non-binding at this point.
So aspirational is not an inaccurate adjective?
No.
I hope they aspire as hard as they can.
I hope so too.
All right.
Good for us to have that information. Thank you for sharing. And then are you gonna talk now about the referendum?
Yes. So, so the, I don't want to say the last, but the largest certainly of our bids was issued in April and opened just almost two weeks ago, about 12 days ago on May 14th. And so the results were favorable for the high school project. We had been working hard with our professionals to try to quote-unquote "value engineer" some of the projects, tweak some of the scopes. So, you know, I'm gonna update the referendum financial status that I've been doing with some of the current information. So you should be able to see this, and I guess most people are kind of familiar with this analysis. The last of the bids that has not been awarded is the, I'm sorry, JP Elementary HVAC at JP Elementary. We've kind of increased our estimate a little bit there, estimating possibly, you know, maybe around $1.8 million bid. We're gonna look to maybe speed that up and get a bid out there soon. The work won't be done until the summer of 2021, which was our plan all along. We felt we couldn't do all the summer programs that we have. So we run the ESY program out of JP, of course, that all changed on March 13th, as we know. But we also have in this is the full, not the full, but the PHS bid with most of the alternates. We are going to take one of the alternates. So there's two alternates that are in here. One of them is a smaller $58,000 alternate that, once they start work, that in the gym floor, they'll find out if it has to be re-poured. The base of the floor, we just don't know till we open it up. That's gonna be held by the contractor until they get the, verify the condition of the floor. But the other one is the athletic restroom slash storage slash concession space in the fields. That is in this number as of now, but we will be reviewing that on Monday and in the near future to determine if we feel that we can afford it or not. Overall, as you can see, some of the projects have, the red shows under budget, I'm sorry, over budget compared to the original architect estimates, not overruns in cost. And, you know, as you can see, the HVAC, JW Middle is mostly HVAC and that was under, that was over the budget, over budget. And then, so we came to the high school, we had some favorable bids. We're not exactly sure what the, if COVID-19 impact that greatly or not, we can never tell. We did have 10 bidders, it was well bid. The low bidder in any way that the bids would be awarded was H&amp;S, which is our current contractor at the JW Middle School Project. So we have it on the agenda tonight to award the bid to them without the concession, without the restroom concession, storage area at the athletic fields. We have 60 days from the bid opening to award a bid. And so we have a little time that we technically have until July 13th. We don't want to wait that long. We want to make a decision to get moving on it. There's a lot of work they have to do to dig up, connect the sewer line is a big function of that project. If we were to award, so it's included in this $8,833,860 number. Also, I should note, included in there is the dine and go or remote dining at the high school. The original budget was $93,500. The scope increased a little bit. It's a very popular project for the high school. I know the principal is a great supporter of this. We're gonna award this and it's included in the bid award tonight, but it will be fully funded out of the Food Enterprise Fund, which can only be used for improvement related to delivery of food to our students. So it was a way we helped to value engineer the referendum. As you can see at this point, it would be negative. As part of our budget process, we did incorporate capital reserve. So we're able to use for our final bid, the JP HVAC Capital Reserve Funds. It's a completely, it is the way to do that if you have, if you have a shortage of funds in your referendum, you make it part of the budget process. Capital Reserve can only be used for capital projects. And kind of that's the big picture where we stand over the next couple of weeks, where we hope to make a decision on that last piece of the project at the high school. And, you know, the last thing I guess I want to say is that, you know, we certainly don't know, you know, all the change orders that may happen on a project of that scope. And so we're looking to make an award tonight, like I said. And then we took out, we did take out some of the, some of the aspects of the project. There's gonna be a lot of discussion about some of that. We have, as you can see here, kind of a smaller allowance for some of the athletic field work. A big, big piece of that is netting for lacrosse fields at the high school. Those lacrosse balls can go over the nets and cause some serious damage. And that's about all I have to say at this point on this. I was gonna pass the baton, so to speak, over to Susan Cantus, co-chair of our facilities committee.
Hi, everyone. I just want to speak a little to the referendum that we are going to be, that is proposed to be voted on later today. So I'm gonna read a little about it so that the public can understand what we are voting on and what we have excluded from the vote tonight. So Steve Cochran and his team, in this case, it was Matt, Dave, Jessica Baxter, Brian Dubinsky, are presenting the PHS component of the referendum for the board approval tonight. It includes projects like the guidance area, the changes, the extra classrooms, flexible classrooms, and changes in the flexible gym space to be used, drainage issues, and some of the main projects that were there for PHS. The facilities committee is unanimously recommending that the board approve the resolution as presented on tonight's agenda. The resolution includes the base bid on PHS construction and accepts the lowest responsible bid of the 10 we received. The low bidder is H&amp;S, as Matt said, H&amp;S Construction, the same firm doing the work at JW. Over the last several months, the facilities committee met both on-site before COVID rules were put into place and virtually since then with Jessica Baxter and Brian, Matt Bolding and Dave Harding to both understand all the alternatives and discuss value engineering to meet the district's needs while mindful of budget considerations. This process led us to the unanimous recommendation to approve, in addition to the core project, several alternatives, which include, if you refer to the spreadsheet, alternate number three, the refurbishment of two bathrooms in the gym hallway that have been out of use for more than a year. Alternative four, refurbishing the existing elevator to improve its performance and extend its life. Alternative five, as Matt mentioned, the grab and go dining that will expand our capacity to serve meals, including free and reduced breakfast and lunches. Alternative six, HVAC controls for PHS that will allow the renovated weight area and the new space above it to be tied to the existing building control system. Alternative nine, alternate nine, which is the counter space in the learning commons with electrical outlets for laptops. And alternate 12 is a project not related to PHS, it's Little Brook Library Upgrades. Little Brook is the only elementary school library that had not been upgraded in the last referendum. The funds had run out for that referendum and their project was not done at that time. And so we are happy to be able to finally be able to put that project to be approved by the board. At this time, the committee also is unanimously recommending that we defer decisions on two alternates, as Matt mentioned. We can award the additional alternates at any time, 60 days from the time the referendum went out. The two alternates are the alternate 11, which is replacing the floor slab in the fitness area. When demolition is commenced, the existing slab will be tested to determine if it needs to be replaced or not. And as discussed, alternate one. This is the restroom facility near the turf field that also includes water stations, some storage space, and a small concession stand, pending further discussion of the facility and of our overall financial picture. This discussion will take place in open session at this coming Monday's facilities committee meeting as well as at future board meetings. If additional discussion is required, it will take place at the facilities and finance committee meetings on June 15th. So I encourage the interested public to attend via Zoom our meeting on Monday. We also are not recommending, Steve's team is not recommending, alternate three, seven, eight, and 10, which were bid out with the rest of the PHS bid. This is some modest upgrades to the girls' softball field, the boys' softball field, the boys' baseball field. And these upgrades are still going to be pursued using some combination of operating funds, community fundraising, maintenance reserves, and capital reserves. The committee fully supports and appreciates Brian and Dave Harding's willingness to address these needs outside of the referendum. Alternate seven was the two additional overhead retractable doors in the new classroom space. The two doors are included in the core bid. And working with Jessica Baxter, we concluded the space can still be used as envisioned without these two additional doors. And Jessica agreed that in light of budget constraints, they are a lower priority than the other alternates. And we are also doing upgrades to boilers and Dave Harding will complete all needed repairs using some combination of operating funds and maintenance reserves. And lastly, is alternate 10, and this was a contemplated reduction to the quality in flooring materials and the new classroom spaces. And we, the administration rejected this because the savings were not significant and Jessica felt that it was important to retain the higher quality of the flooring originally specified. I want to, I think our committee would like to thank Jessica and Brian for working with us so closely as well as Matt and Dave. I think we, over the last several months, were able to really get a good understanding of the projects and work through in a very collaborative way so that we can understand and hopefully approve tonight the recommendations being put forth. And we will continue the discussion on the, particularly the outside bathroom alternate in the next several weeks in a collaborative manner as well.
Thank you, Susan. Do we have any questions now or do we want to, do we want to have any board questions on this at this point? Or should we wait till we have the matter to just to vote?
Question, I think just for a further conversation, it would be helpful to know the amount of repairs the boilers will need, just as we're talking about taking money from reserves. It would be good to understand.
I think Dave had received a bid of $80,000, but since then, we have had some issues with them. So he's not, he might go up a little because the repairs will be a little more extensive. But he felt that working outside of the referendum, we would get a better pricing than what was bid in the referendum. But it is still highly important we do it. In fact, over, since schools have closed, there's been some issues with maintaining those boilers. So it still is a very high project on his list.
Yeah, just to note one thing there and Matt, jump in. I think the intent is to, board may recall that the last two years, there was spending above the budgeted amounts in many of the facilities' maintenance lines as more and more systems and equipment, you know, experienced problems. This year, the budget for those lines is very similar to what we actually spent in the past two years. So Matt, I believe it's Dave's hope that some of the boiler expense and perhaps a large chunk of it may be able to be done out of the operating budget. And only if it can't, would you then look to the maintenance reserve, is that right?
Yes, yes. And he got quotes, just not to, we didn't get hard bids on any of this.
No, I understand that.
In those comments for the.
I didn't have to re-quote because I think what he even, the scope of what he's looking at is larger than what, when he got a couple of initial quotes.
Exactly.
Okay, are there any questions?
One question, we've got Scott Downey on the call. And I don't know whether we have Kathy also, but if they're, they're gonna stick around and, you know, wait for public comment in case there are topics that come up. But there is one member of the public who sent a question ahead of time for Scott. So should we wait or should we, you know, have Scott to answer that one question ahead of the public comment?
Yeah, I would go ahead right now and do that quickly.
So Scott, I emailed it to you earlier, but one of our very engaged and constructive community members was wondering about where we stood with all of the approvals that we need. And if you could just remind us, I know we've got approval from, I think, the Controller, the Department of Education, the Delaware and Warden Canal Commission, and the Department of Community Affairs. And I may be remembering, forgetting someone. And I also know that there are approvals that we typically get before we start and then other approvals that we get as we go. So if you could just update us on where we stand with the approvals, that would be great.
Yeah, you're correct, the Department of Education approvals are in hand. The Office of the State Comptroller approvals are in hand. The DRCC, the. The DRCC, the Delaware, Raritan Canal Commission has indicated to us that we are approved. We're just waiting for the final paperwork from them. And DCA has released the majority of the project as approved. But there are some components that have to be submitted to DCA to complete their approval process. And these come from the shop growing seminole. They involve the contractor. So they actually can't be done until after the bid is awarded. So those will remain in process. And, but we understand from DCA that other than those items and the final release being sent to us, we've addressed all of their comments, questions through the approval process.
That's great news. Thank you, Scott. Are there any other questions? Yep. Next is committee highlights. And I would suggest committee reports, if we could do those by submission, where everyone gives a written report and attaches it and we have it with the minutes of this meeting. Would that be acceptable? We've done it for SAC already. It's already posted. So thank you, Betsy, for that. All right, so then we'll keep moving right through this. We can do this tonight, people. We're going to get through all of this.
Betsy doesn't always need to set the bar so high.
But she does. Thank you, Betsy. Our next item, J1, is public comment. So we now invite the public to ask us, or to give us comments. It's not a Q and A. But we ask that you state your name and your address, and you try to keep it to three minutes in respect for your fellow citizens and for the rest of us at the meeting. So we now ask if the public would have comments on agenda and non-agenda items. And if so, indicate so to Matt. How do they do that, Matt? They?
They're raising their hands. Felicia Spitz will go first. You're up, Felicia.
I wanted to make a couple of statements about Steve, while he's still here. I have to open my document up again. Sorry about that. I wanted to say thank you tonight, Steve. And I wanted to tell a little story, and I'm going to keep it to three minutes. As a younger woman, I heard the expression, "You don't know what you've got until it's gone." And I just thought that sounded ridiculous. Of course you do, right? No, wrong. It appears that the brain is constantly trying to help us by forcing all the new and different information in. And what happens over time is this phenomena where we wind up taking things for granted that are actually really important. Being me, I decided I wasn't going to let my brain control that. And I was going to take special pains to not take things or people for granted. Fifty-some odd years later, it turns out that taking things, not taking things for granted is a more difficult task than young me imagined. Over the years, I've had to limit my efforts on this front. Fewer and fewer people were special enough to get into my "do not take for granted" category. You, sir, are in that group. What you have done for equity has not been taken for granted by me. Many, many say that they want to advance equity or that they're in this for the kids. But when it comes down to the hard work of actually doing things, taking action to change the status quo, we see who really means it. And you mean it. You care. You have always cared. You are willing to do what it takes to make progress. You're one of the few people who can listen without defensiveness and remain open to ideas, even when you have a perfectly good one of your own. You're willing to try something new. You don't answer with a policy limitation or a story from 40 years ago where a similar idea didn't work in a completely different environment. You let those around you realize their potential. You offer real tangible support. You have the uncomfortable conversation to get issues out in the open that will enable forward progress. You try new things. You show up. You care about the kids. I think a lot of people have perhaps not noticed that you've done all this because you do it effortlessly. You always have a smile and a kind ear. You make what I can only imagine is a really difficult job appear easy. I am really sad that you're leaving. I am going to miss you. PCF is going to miss you. The kids that didn't even know what you were doing in the background will miss you. And for others who perhaps were too busy and didn't realize, they'll learn what they had after you're gone. I really hope that wherever you go next, there are lakes that need no canoe, just clear water and peace. Best.
Thank you, Felicia.
Thank you, Felicia. Of course, this work is never done well alone. And there were lots of partners to help, and you were one of them. So thank you.
Kip Cherry, you're up next.
Okay, am I good?
You're good.
Okay. I just want to cover two areas. The first is, I appreciate very much Annie's report. It's the second time I've heard it. And it leads to many additional questions. I also appreciate what Beth said regarding students that may be having trouble with computers, either because they don't have access or they don't know how to use them when they have them. And also Bob Ginsberg's comment about possibly helping to teach parents who may be trying to help their kids and don't know how to do, how to handle some of the computers themselves. And I'd like to drill down deeper in that. I think the board would be well served to know more detail about how many students are really having trouble with computers. I've gone through the closure preparedness plan. And it says here that we don't have a program for a one-on-one device situation. And I think in this day and age, every kid needs to have good access to a device. So I would maybe disagree a little bit with that lack of program. So I think that's something to strive for for the future. I'd like to know more about the remedial action that this district is taking to help these kids that are having computer issues. And also, of course, they have to have internet access. I'd like to know more about the techies that are helping them and what the responsibilities are of the techies, what they are, what they're responsible for, and what the teachers are responsible for. And just really get more dirty with the data. I see Zoom as something that will be used in the future. I don't think it's going to go away, even when hopefully COVID is controlled by vaccine or some other method. But I think that we need to get more into this. And I think maybe, you know, our focus has been very much on facilities. And in a way, you only need an awning to handle a computer. And what's really important is the computer and not so much the facility. And I know Steve has said that many times, that that's just a structure. It's not what we do within the structure. It's that what we do is more important. The other area I want to cover is the referendum. And I just want to express my disappointment that the public wasn't involved in looking at the alternates. I think that we might have couched a few of them to be a little bit different, maybe have added some efficiencies. And that's specific about the stand. But there are other areas, too, that might have been a little bit different. And we might have saved money or been more effective. And I do think that there still are some COVID issues that relate to the referendum. I'm not just sure how that's all going to work out. And I'll just mention the nurses station is one of those areas where maybe we're thinking of things a little bit differently than we were before during the referendum process. I also want to mention that the bid opening was public, which was very good. But then we were very disappointed that the public was not involved in getting information on the results and being able to review and comment. And again, I think the alternates are something that the public could have had some good comments to provide to the board. And so, you know, to have this public comment opportunity now just before you're ready to vote and after you've already made up your mind, that's disappointing, very disappointing. So I just want to mention all that. And I think, too, I'm just concerned a little bit that you're spending money at quite a rate. And we don't know still where we stand with school aid. And while that's part of the operating budget and not part of the capital budget, they all kind of work together. And as we expand the high school, for instance, that will expand the operating costs of the high school, I would think, anyway. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say. And I appreciate all that you're doing. And so, thank you.
Thanks, Kip.
Are there any other questions out there? I don't see anyone raising their hands. Give you another moment here. I don't see anybody. All right. There are no further questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. And Kip, I will say, you know, you and I spoke last week and that whole idea of a COVID lens on some of the projects that we're doing, we definitely, I pass that on, and it's being taken into consideration.
So thank you.
Yeah, and Kip, it's actually on the agenda, or I think it will be on the agenda for Monday, facilities committee meeting, as for the discussion about the restroom facility, which is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. So if there's no further public comment, then we will be moving on. And we will go through, now first, the personnel agenda. K1, appointments. The first item is a consent item. Who's dog?
Sorry.
K2 is the appointment of the John Witherspoon Vice President. And this is an action item. Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion? Yes, Brian, a second. Betsy, any discussion?
Can I lead off on this?
Yep.
Yeah. You know, board members, please join in. It's just, this is a rare honor I have tonight to be able to recommend not one, but actually two assistant principals to join Jason Burr in the leadership of our middle school. As the board knows, we received more than 170 applications for the position that was created by the retirement of longtime assistant principal Lynn Harkness earlier this spring. Jason and two other administrators, Beth Muirin and Krista, they conducted screening interviews with, I think, 24 of the 170 applicants and eventually brought six to a search committee. And then that committee presented me with two really outstanding finalists. One of those finalists on the agenda tonight is Tim Charleston, who served our district for the last six years as the K-8 supervisor of global studies and enrichment. Tim is, he's known and trusted by the staff at JW, has excellent organizational and logistical skills. He has proven leadership in the areas of instructional innovation, technology, facilities and securities management, and the design of culturally responsive curriculum. And he cares deeply about kids. And then the other finalist is Stephanie DeCarlo. And Stephanie is this caring, energetic, experienced teacher of special education, currently at Grover Middle School in West Windsor Plainsboro. She serves as a mentor to new teachers. She leads extensive professional development on topics ranging from social emotional learning to differentiated instruction. She serves on the Intervention and Referral Services Committee, and she's a driving force on the school's green team. She also has a certificate in middle school mathematics, and she collaborated in the development of a mathematics textbook. So, you know, both Tim and Stephanie bring this really unique set of skills to support and guide our students in what is really a rapidly evolving educational environment. And so I'm delighted to recommend them together tonight as a team to support Jason and his staff and students at the middle school. And before the board votes or discusses, I just, I want to make it really clear that the second assistant principalship is not an additional administrative position and does not add to our budget for next year. My recommendation to the board is to dissolve the current supervisory position that Tim Charleston holds as K-8 supervisor of global studies and to use those funds to create the second assistant principalship. And to do so at a time when the middle school is growing. Next year will be at 850, so up by 10%. And will continue rising in the course of the next few years to about 975, close to 1,000 students. So adding two assistant principals for a school that size is not an uncommon practice in middle schools. But I also want to make it clear that my recommendation is not driven just by numbers, but also by what I see as a real need to have as much support as possible for our students, for our staff, and for our families as we process this current crisis and as we enter a new era in how, when, and where we provide high-quality instruction. And I feel like the combination of Tim and Stephanie is going to be able to best support all of our students. So I really am looking at this from the lens of equity and trying to maximize the, from a priorities-based budgeting standpoint, take our resources and put them where they will do the most good for kids. So.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Go ahead, Michelle.
Yes, Michelle.
I just have, I just want to make sure I have a process question. So item two and item three on this personnel agenda, are they broken out from the larger item? They're broken out from the other appointments question?
They are.
Action items.
So it's timely for me to talk about those two JW appointments?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what I will say is that I wanted to advise the board and the public that I'll be voting against both of these appointments this evening. And my vote against these appointments has absolutely nothing to do with the two individuals who are being appointed, nor does it have anything to do with the superintendent's selection of those folks. My concern, which I have articulated repeatedly, has been my grave concern about the process. And it comes from a position of trying to look at everything with an equity lens. We are a school district that repeatedly claims that our overarching priority is one of equity and inclusion and that we're going to lead with our values and in all things. And I'm not persuaded that in this circumstance, the process from, you know, collecting the resumes and reviewing the resumes and having them go to the search committee, that it was clearly articulated that the priority of this district was to pursue equity. And so as a person who knows that equity, just like anything, requires hard work and vigilance, constant vigilance, I feel like we've fallen short. And one of the things that's really important to me is that when we talk about equity, it's not, it's not just in the classroom. It's every aspect of what we do has to be, we have to lead with an eye toward ensuring that every kid and every staff person and every faculty member is treated with equity in mind and as a leading value of the school district. And so, forgive me, I got new glasses and I can't see. From the information that was shared with me about the process, that equity lens was not worn. And so I am, I want to make a point that as we enter into a year where we're going to be looking for a new superintendent, a new assistant superintendent for curriculum, a new principal for Johnson Park School, that we insist upon an equity lens from the first advertisement for these positions until the final decision is made. That it is conscious, that it is intentional, and that it happens. And if it doesn't happen, then I'm going to be saying the same thing over and over and over again. Because if we're not going to do it, let's not say it. Let's just be who we are and move on. But if equity is really an overarching value, we should see it in everything we do. So that's my explanation for my vote.
Thank you. Debbie?
I'm disappointed the interview process was not at the par it has been in the past. And I'm also disappointed that an extra ask was done when things appeared to be a certain way. So you will hear my votes are. Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other discussion? If not, let's call the question. And I will note that Peter Katz will abstain because this does not involve cranberry. Thank you. Matt?
You're muted, Matt.
Just a question, is this on two votes?
No, we're voting on item K2.
But.
But K2.
Tim Charleston.
Okay.
Yes.
Co VP. Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
No.
Dan Dart. Who's Dan?
No. Muted.
I just did the same thing, so I can't say.
No.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
No.
Peter Katz abstains by policy. Daphne Kendall.
You're muted, Daphne.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That takes us to item K3, which is the, this is the resolution to approve Stephanie DeCarlo as assistant principal of JW Middle School, the co-position. Can I have a motion? Brian, second. Betsy, any discussion? No discussion? If so, let's call the question. Could you please read it?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
No.
Dan Dart.
No.
Jess Deutsch.
No.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
No.
Peter Katz abstains by rule. Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That takes us, oh.
We just offer a little congratulations to Tim and Stephanie who've been, you know, they're still with us.
Yes.
Congratulations. We're excited to have you onboard as a team, working with Jason. I'm sure Jason Burr is still here as well.
Yes. Can we have them say hello? I, I think they're on the call. I don't know if they're prepared to say hi.
I've called Tim out there before.
Or another time, then.
Jason, would you like to say something? Oh, you're muted. You're muted. There you go.
Just congratulations to two people who I know are going to bring a very student-centered focus to John Witherspoon Middle School and a special congratulations. I hope that we have many years of working together and very blessed to have the support of everybody here and, and in terms of helping the students at JW. So thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, I think Stephanie just texted us.
She'd be happy to say hello, or I can at another time. That's inappropriate, so.
All right, why don't we? We can just keep going then. It's a good thing. Okay. So that, that takes us to item K4, retirements. Now, I think a lot of these are consents, and I'm going to just go through them. And someone stop me if you want further discussion, but otherwise we'll just go to the consent. We've got retirements. We've got resignations, K5. K6 is transfers. K7, leaves of absence. K8, leave replacements. K9, curriculum and instruction.
I have a question.
Yes.
So Annie, on this, on the summer school appointments for, for.
For summer school?
For the summer school, yes. We had discussed in student achievement that there would be a required, we would like, the board would like to see a required, of live learning as a required component. And so has that been communicated to everyone who's on this list?
It has. Yes, it has. And every, every teacher is aware that that is the expectation. They are interested and excited, and they're teachers who have been experimenting with all kinds of live instruction remotely.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you for the question and the answer. K10, student services. K11, personnel items. K12, revision to reappointments. K13, create and dissolve positions. K14, mentoring plan.
That was an action item.
Oops.
That's okay.
K13, can I have a motion? Two. These are the staff, positions, additional staff as required by the budget and in connection with the approvals we did earlier on the JW. Right? Do you want to talk about those? Are, are we good? I'm not describing them in great detail.
Well, honestly, I wanted them separated differently, so.
Oh.
I didn't want the achievement coaches mixed in with the second assistant principal. So it just, it doesn't work out.
Well, it, it. Okay. Are we, do we need to separate that out, or is it, can we just vote? I think. Matt?
Problem?
Problem is, I didn't want to vote on the way, based on the two people we just hired, I didn't want to vote on these two jobs because I don't agree with it all.
Okay, well.
But I will just.
It doesn't have to be.
Like the achievement coach, I will say that, and the transportation assistant. So I will vote no for the rest of it. You'll just have to read through the lines. Okay, go ahead.
If I could just say as well, I think this is an example, this line item, of our board dealing with minimal resources. We can't create new positions without figuring out how to repurpose them. But we have to look with a, with an eye to what our students need in the fall. And to me, the way that, the, the new positions that have been created and the positions that are being repurposed are a way to do just that.
Right. I would also say I appreciate the, the reallocation of resources and the putting our resources where they're most needed, and in particular with COVID, kind of focusing on the middle school. I think I'm really happy we, we've done that, and I think we came to a good place with that. So I don't think I got a formal motion for this item. Could I have a motion, please? Betsy, a second. Brian? So if we could go to a vote, we're going to vote now on the resolution to approve hiring of additional staff as referenced above, necessitates dissolving of their existing positions to ensure such changes are budget neutral. So it's the dissolution of certain positions. So Matt, could you call a roll?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
No.
Dan Dart.
No.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
In the interest of consistency, no.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. It takes us to item K14, mentoring plan. That's a consent item. K15, job description. And that takes us to L, curriculum instruction. L1 is grant application of ESEA for fiscal 2020. Numbered L2, grant application ESSR. Number three, educational consulting services, Sage Wellness. Number four, educational consulting, Dew East. Number five, professional consulting, RIS. Number six, curriculum management system, Rubicon. Number seven, West Interactive Services, School Messenger. Eight is learning A to Z supplements. Nine, Power School Enrollment Express. 10, annual memberships. 11, Learning Ally. 12, adoption of K12 textbooks. 13, adoption of pre-K to 12 curriculum. 14 is grant application acceptance. We're accepting a grant from PEF. It's 13,843. 15, annual field trip approval.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
There was a question this week of, does this approval mean we are approving all of these field trips to happen? We don't actually know what, what life will look like and if field trips will happen. This is an annual approval that the board does. We've cleaned up this list over the past years. We've been approving, the board have been approving things that actually were no longer field trips. So we took a really measured look to see where people were actually going. So this is just an annual approval. It does not bind the board or the principals to, or teachers to actually go on all of these trips. But this is something that we do approve.
Thank you. And I think we, as a board, appreciate the work of our staff and working with SAC to streamline this. I know we've asked a lot of questions, but we really appreciate all the information we've received. That's, and item 16 is the COVID emergency preparedness plan required by the state. Item M1, financial report.
Can I ask something on that?
Sure.
So that, Steve, that committee or those, those people are only meeting once every other week? I would really hope we'd be meeting weekly.
We, we are, Debbie, we are. So it's, it's the full committee.
Yeah.
Of 30 plus meets every two weeks. But the subcommittees, there are at least five, and then like Annie's committee of, of education is, is divided into elementary, middle school, high school. She has three subcommittees to her subcommittee. They're, they're all meeting intermittently and then reporting out at the larger.
And each of those three levels of committees have broken down into even smaller committees. So there are multiple meetings a week around.
I also want to be clear that, that the plan that you're approving was for the school closure of the current year that we filed initially on March 13th or 16th. So it really doesn't, there isn't a requirement from the state yet for us to have a reopening committee, which is really the leadership team that we're talking about. This was just an update of what kinds of changes have we put into place in our plan since it was filed in March? And what are we doing for summer was the particular question that the state had. They wanted to see that component in the, the plans. Because remember, when we did the plan the first time, it was for two weeks. And so they were just looking for an update.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks for the question. M1, financial reports. M2, formal bid award. This is an action item. Could I have a motion? Daphna, second. Brian, and discussion?
So I have a question. So there was a shared services committee, I guess, with the town, and we were looking to combine or look for area to save resources. And I had previously been on that committee, and I'm just wondering. Garbage.
So you, you just cut out a little bit. Could you repeat that?
Yes. So I'm just wondering why garbage collection isn't something that we can share with the town?
Are we, are you talking about the bid for the high school?
M3. Sorry.
Two.
Two is the, the high school bid. Three.
Refuse removal?
No, I want, or an item two, the formal bid award for the PHS referendum project.
Two in my. Refuse removal recycling service for the 2021 school year.
I, I, I don't know why that's on your.
No, it's M3. It's M3.
No, M2 I'm talking about.
Oh, they got switched. Refresh your screen, maybe. It's M3.
Yeah, it might have been changed. It might have been, yeah, updated.
Mine has like two M2.
Happy to take that question when we get to that one. I just don't think we're quite there yet.
Okay.
So, so could, so we have, so we, any discussion on the, the board, the award of the contract to H&amp;S Construction for its lowest qualified responsible total bid of $8,531,500? Base bid and alternates 3, 4, 5, 6, 9, and 12, including allowance of $100,000 for the PHS renovation. Noted that alternative 11 could be contingently awarded if necessary for an additional amount of $58,000. This will be held until need is determined. Additionally, alternate 1, the athletic restroom concession and storage of $530,000 may be awarded June 9th, 2020, but in no case later than July 13th, 2020. Alternative bid 5, remote dining will be paid out for food service enterprise funds, from the enterprise funds. So that's the, that's the resolution. Is there any other discussion?
I just have a question. The, there's some time urgency about awarding this bid because obviously we want them to get started. That's number one. Number two is we are required by law, obviously, to accept the lowest bid, and H&amp;S is the lowest bidder. So the question I have is if we awarded that bid tonight, for example, and deferred all the alternative, all the alternate bids until an open committee meeting of the facilities committee, would that set us back at all? And would that give the community a chance to have the input that they desire on the alternate, not on the base bid?
Well, I think we've talked about this in the facilities committee, and I think we came to an unanimous decision with, you, I, you were part of that discussion that we felt it was important to pass this tonight with as many of the alternatives as we could so we can get the work going and, and keep our, you know, get our buildings free and make sure we're ready for the fall. A number of reasons that we felt it was important to approve as much as we could. Okay. I know Susan or Brian want to comment on that.
I, either the, the sooner we can move forward, the sooner the process of onboarding a contractor can begin. And it's not a flip of a switch. There are an awful lot of things that take place over a four-week period that, you know, Matt can, can talk about. And, you know, a number of those alternates are more difficult to separate than the, the two that we have deferred. And so I would recommend that we move forward as we unanimously agreed to in the facilities committee meeting, award the core bid and the alternates, let the project start moving, especially so that the prep and demolition can commence in the, you know, area by the, the, the fitness center, and we can do the tests that we need to do and, you know, get going. Because that's going to be dirty and messy work, and we want to get as much of that done as possible before teachers, staff, and students return at the end of August into early September.
And one of the prep projects is to be able to build a wall in the gym so that in the fitness area, so part of the fitness area, when students are in the building, will be usable to them. And doing that in the summer is critical to get that ready for September.
Thank you. So can I call the question? I'd like to call the question. So would you please read the roll, Matt?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone for all the work they put into that. We spent a lot of time, and I am grateful for all the staff support and again, response to all of our questions. M3, formal bids, contract renewals 2021. This is a consent item, but Daphne had a question.
Yeah, so, and I refreshed my screen, Betsy, so thank you miraculously. So this, so we, we have been in talks with the town for several years now about shared services, and I'm just wondering why something like garbage cannot be something that we can find a way to share.
Matt, do you remember if garbage collection was even on that list of possible shared services for the town? I'm sorry, I just don't recall.
I think it's been, it's been looked at in the past amongst different, I don't know if we're going to save any money necessarily. It certainly, you know, if we can save money, we will, we will try it.
I think it was on the list, but there was no great suggested savings.
No, that, I don't, yeah, I couldn't remember if it was or not, but.
It's, it's a good, it's a good point to raise. We should just connect with them and find out when, what their cycle is and what our cycle is and wonder whether, you know, a joint bid would make sense, if we can get the timing aligned.
Well, we can always do, you know, three months and then go back. Like, you don't have to do a year.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, just to get the information so we're, have that opportunity.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up, raising that point, though.
Next is the food service management company renewal. Next is NJSIG safety grant. And then we have a consent vote. Could I have a motion? For a consent vote? Brian, second. Second, Peter, thank you. I've got a second. Would you call the roll, please, Matt?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yeah.
Betsy Baglio. Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to our last public comment on any topic. If anyone would like to comment, please raise your hand. And we keep to three minutes. State your name and address. State your name and address. It's not a Q and A.
So once again, anyone out there, just raise your hand and I will open up your mic and call on you. Do not see anybody at this time.
Okay. If there's no comments, that takes us to our closing discussion. We did have long-term planning on the agenda. Steve, did you just want to say a brief couple of sentences about that or not?
Sure. We actually had a meeting of our, our planning committee this afternoon. We obviously had been moving forward with long-term planning for the, the growth of the district with our consultants, my loan and room. When the COVID crisis hit and we had to pivot and go into remote learning, we understand if we put a pause on, on that planning process. And so we just had a meeting today to, to think about how to, to restart that and maybe with a, a different scope. So the initial process had been looking, you know, short, mid, long range, out, you know, 15, 20 years. And we realized that we have very immediate needs for reopening school next year and, you know, to borrow KIP's language, putting a COVID lens over some of our planning will be important and maybe M and M can help us with that, understanding, for example, what our capacity of our buildings are going to look like under the new social distancing restrictions that may have far fewer kids in any space at one time. And then the other piece is just looking three to five years out at the growth of our district, particularly knowing the, the pinch point at the high, at the middle school, which is going from seven eighty to eight fifty next year and then up, as I was indicating before, nine hundred, nine fifty, nine seventy-five. What solutions do we have for the, the middle school as it grows rapidly in the next three to five years? And then taking a look at some of the, the other solutions that we may be looking at, redistricting, different use, use of land, whether it's the valley road building, whether it's CP, expanding of the elementary school. So being able to get the, the focus on the next three to five years and some real solutions that we can then share with the larger community. So I think that was where the committee was going and wanted me to reach out to M and M and get a sense of their willingness and ability to sort of help us narrow the, the focus of their work.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Could I have a motion to adjourn? If there's nothing else, anyone else have anything before? If not, let's do a motion to adjourn. Anybody? Betsy? Second, Jess? All in favor? Raise your hands. I think that motion's passed. Thank you very much. Thanks to everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Everyone. Congratulations, Bob, Stephanie, Tim.